AM 1?
1 AM 21-105.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we will pull those things from the consent agenda. Anything other changes to the agenda? See and none. The agenda is approved as presented. Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to have my dear wife, Susan White, stand and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.[26.52][26.52](Laughter)[27.52][27.52](Laughter)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[43.82][43.82](Applause)
Okay. Thank you, Susan.[48.21][48.21](Laughter) Going to move down front to present the Borough Seals and the manager.
Mr. McKee?
Manager's going to join us. Mr. McKee is going to come down.
Ms. Bovee?
Let me get closer to the mic. Let's get everybody down here and I guess I'll get closer to the mic. This is kind of a annual thing we do with the Borough. This is for George McKee, Assembly District Number Three, in appreciation of your service October, I don't have my glasses on, 2015 through November 2021. And so this is the seal and of course you see the comments from all your friends. Special thank you from the mayor. You've been a great customer.
I would like to say one thing. I know everybody expects me to say some snarky comments.[116.11][116.11](Laughter)
No, no, no.
But I'm going to disappoint you, okay? It has been not only a pleasure, but I consider a privilege to serve you.
You're a good man, all right.[129.11][129.11](Applause)
So, Mr. McKee, I have a small token of our appreciation for you. I felt it would be appropriate to have something that was comedic in nature. So, we have this T-shirt for you. I want Dee to see this too. She was, oh, there you are. So, this says McKee, right? And we've even got the horseshoe in the sea. We picked that up. Matsu Borough Assembly, October 2015, November 2021. And it says, as you'll notice, "Beam me up, Scotty."[163.12][163.12](Laughter) And then below that it says, "Now, listen, folks."[167.12][167.12](Laughter) And then it's got some other McKeeisms down here at the bottom. I'll read those to you. This is like ants giving birth to elephants.[175.51][175.51](Laughter) You can't make this stuff up. "Show me the money. I've got a question for you." I call the question. "We don't have a port. We have a dock. And who's paying for this?"[191.62][191.62](Laughter) So, good, Mr. McKee.[194.45][194.45](Applause)[196.45][196.45](Laughter)
That was great. Thank you. And this is for Tam Bovee, Assemblywoman, District Seven, in appreciation of your many years' service for Matsu Borough, October 2016 through November 2021. And it's got all the signatures and we appreciate your service and, uh, if you have a...[226.01][226.01](Applause) These are from...[228.01][228.01](Laughter)
One of the things that's great about Assemblymember Bovee is you'll be hard-pressed to find anyone that will outwork her. Her passion for her community and representing it is unsurpassed. And I'm not taking anything away from folks that are on the dais, but no kidding, she works hard, hard, hard. And I appreciate that commitment to your community. It's inspiring. So, thank you.
Thank you.[267.27][267.27](Applause) Borough Mayor Vern Halter, in appreciation of your service, October 2015 to November 2021. I just want to say just a brief thank you. Mayor Halter actually served 17 years. He was on the Trepper Creek Road Service Area Advisory Board for two years, three years on the Planning Commission, six years as Assembly Representative for District Seven, and six years as mayor. So, the Borough is definitely a better place because of his dedication and leadership. So, on behalf of Borough staff and Matsu Borough residents, thank you, Mayor Halter.[320.13][320.13](Applause)
This means a lot to me to be wrapping up my terms with Matsu Borough. It's been a long period of time, but I've enjoyed every minute of it. And serving the Matsu Borough and seeing its growth, rapid growth of population, and just who we are in the Matsu Borough, I guess, is what always means the most to me. We are the greatest place on earth to live, and we want to keep it that way. So, I have great respect for our new mayor and our assembly members. It doesn't really matter. I love a diverse assembly. And that what we have and we should keep that. And we're going in the right direction. So, let's just keep that movement ahead and thank you for always allowing me to serve.[370.31][370.31](Applause)
As we're going back to our seats, we're going to, we have a small video for you, Mr. Mayor. If you want to get comfortable and watch the screen, it's about a little over three minutes long. But it's just a small snippet of the various projects, infrastructure, different things that have happened under the mayor's term. It's impossible to do that in a short period of time with his length of service, but we wanted to take a stab at it and thought it would be fun for you as well. So, thank you.
As mayor.
As mayor.
To the best of my abilities.
Best of my abilities.
So, help me God.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight to see one of our first big rec pon projects be
I always love those groundbreaking ceremonies and I think I have at least two dozen golden shovels. I'd take one for very groundbreaking, so it's, uh, it was, thank you very much for showing that, so. Okay, I guess we are going to move on here. We got the minutes presented for the previous meetings, 10:12, 10:19, and 10:19, special and regular meeting, 10:19. Any changes to the minutes? Here, none. The minutes are approved and presented. Reports from the cities, any cities? Edna DeBree, you might as well report, you know. Welcome.
Well, as you can about imagine, this would be my last report from the city of Palmer. And I think we're leaving the city of Palmer in good hands. We have a new city clerk that's been on the job two weeks. We are in negotiations for our city attorney, which will start the first of January, so lots of things going on. Lots of activities happening now in the city of Palmer. Of course, Stan's from Country Cuts will have his fireworks after Thanksgiving downtown. The Jewish Center will be lighting their candles on the 30th of November. And then after that, of course, we'll be Colony Days, and then we'll hit the New Year. So, that's my final report for the city of Palmer.
Thank you.[709.42][709.42](Applause) Okay, Houston or Resela? I see nobody there. How about the school district? Any school district? Nobody from the school district? How about Mr. Smolten, State of Alaska?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. Again, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Halter and my Assembly person, Assembly Person Bovee. And I will echo what Manager Brown said. She is one of the hardest-working politicians I've ever encountered, and I appreciate that as her constituent. I wanted to just real briefly, just to let everybody know that the governor is working on the budget process right now. And we will, the state of Alaska will have more than enough money to put a long-term fiscal plan in place with federal dollars that are coming in, with the growth of the permanent fund. We will be, we'll be in a very good position if the legislature will work with the governor to put a fiscal plan in place. And the governor has presented a plan. The bipartisan fiscal working group worked on developing a plan, and so far neither one of those plans has really been truly honored by the leadership in the legislature. But we are hoping that that will take place in the next session. If you have any, and I know you do, requests like roads and infrastructure and things like that, I spoke with Manager Brown about this, but, you know, make sure you put those together. If you have any resolutions, make sure you do that as well so that those can be moved forward to the governor for his consideration as we work through the budget process. If anybody has any questions for me, I will take them.
Questions? Mr. Sumner?
So, through the mayor, do we know what the latest federal infrastructure package, what that dollar figure is for roads and highways for State of Alaska?
I do not have an actual dollar amount. I asked for that, but still, still working on that. If, when I get that, I can certainly forward that to you, though, Assemblymember Sumner.
Any other questions? Okay, I want to thank you, Mr. Smolten. So, you're so dedicated to coming to every meeting and I could call for many years to report for the governor, so I want to personally thank you and really appreciate it, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And having said that, I'm going to leave early tonight.
Okay.[908.32][908.32](Laughter)
Because it's supposed to be minus 20 and...
It is.
You know where we live, so I have some things to prepare for minus 20, but I'll be listening on the way home, so thank you.
Well, take care and thank you. We have a joint Assembly School Board Committee meeting, Ms. Nowers?
We have not had a meeting, but we have one coming up in December, and I believe on the agenda will be a joint resolution regarding user-friendly transparency in healthcare pricing.
Okay. Any other public relations reports from the Assemblymembers or staff? Here, none. We will pass it on to Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just three updates for the Assembly tonight. First is, it pains me to do this, but to request another meeting, I would like to request a special Assembly meeting at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January 11th, to specifically discuss Port McKenzie. As you may recall, we did something earlier this calendar year where we sat down and gave you a comprehensive port update. This would allow us to do that again, as well as have a discussion around business development, marketing opportunities with the port, with the new mayor and Assembly, so we would like to get that on the schedule so we can have that early in the new calendar year if the Assembly sees fit. We distributed the IAMPE report as a starting point for that conversation to allow a couple months for folks to mull that over, share it with folks in the public, and prepare for, you know, what would allow for a more detailed discussion that evening that doesn't overlap with an existing meeting. So, that would be my first request. I don't know if we need the Assembly's approval for that, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Any objection to that, Assembly? December 6?
January 11.
Like I said, January 11.
January 11.
Okay. I was just checking to see if everybody was awake. January 11. No objections, so we can set it.
All right, very good. Thank you. Second update, in the introductions on the agenda tonight, you'll see there's a state appropriated $10 million in grant funding that's coming to the Matsu, that is coming to the Matsu to address pavement and roadway rehabilitation and preservation. The Borough has the latitude to determine the work that this money will go toward in terms of roads. It includes a variety of road work, crack ceiling, pavement rehabilitation, signage, drainage, et cetera, to prolong the life. Like I said, it'll be introduced tonight for public hearing on December 7th, so it's really an opportunity to get it out there in front of the public so you can have conversations with your constituents and consider in advance of December 7th how you might want to do that. So, staff have provided one option, which is attached to the legislation, which provides funding to match road service area funds to largely rehab higher-traffic-volume roads. So, that option specifically goes after those higher-traffic-volume roads, which is going to lead you predominantly to the core area. Two other potential options for use include a distribution of funds to road service areas by possibly using a per-mile metric. So, take $10 million divided by the number of miles and apportion it in that way. That would be another potential approach. Another option may be to apply the $10 million to the recently voter-approved transportation package. So, there's a $61 million package approved by the voters. This $10 million could potentially be utilized to fund the first $10 million in that $61 million package. Staff are currently checking with the state granting agency to confirm that use for the recently passed package is allowable, and we want to try to get that in writing. So, really, staff was intending to provide you three reasonable options for potential use of this funding for you to consider over the next couple of weeks, and then we'll have a staff report and an update on December 7th to move that forward. And then lastly, in addition to the regular Assembly meeting at 6:00 PM on December 7th, the Assembly also has a special meeting at 4:00 PM that night to discuss a potential severance tax. So, this was something that was tabled a while back, and the gravel industry had requested a special meeting just to be able to hear from them and talk about what the impacts of that might be. The severance tax, as it was initially written, would apply to large gravel pit operators in the Borough. It has been previously discussed as a potential way to raise revenues to pay for what is now the recently voter-approved transportation package in lieu of taking on additional debt service. The special meeting will provide the Assembly the opportunity to hear from the gravel industry, and I want to be clear here, no action will be taken on this item that night. This special meeting is purely informational, so just wanted to remind you of that as that's coming up pretty quickly. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprapless?
So, I was asked to comment about the emergency temporary standard that OSHA put out. Been in the news about mandating employers over 100 people having either a vaccine requirement or masking and weekly testing. As it stands right now, the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals put a stay on that order, and even though we're not in the Fifth Circuit, in response to that stay, federal OSHA turned around and said, "We're going to, we're going to hold off on implementation until litigation is over." So, at this point, you know, matters of whether it's state OSHA or federal OSHA that we have to follow kind of have fallen by the wayside because OSHA's come out with a statement and said, "We're going to wait until it gets resolved in the courts before moving forward." So, I was asked to give a quick comment on that. And then I just want to give the Assemblymembers a heads up, the newly-elected officials are here. I spoke with them earlier. We do have an executive session later tonight to talk about state redistricting, and when the motion is made to go into executive session, it's my recommendation that you ask the newly-elected officials to come in. We've done this before because we've had executive sessions on the night of certification, and they'll be dealing with the issues after next Monday and the new terms start. That's all I have.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
The Clerk's report is in your red folders, has the upcoming meetings and the quasi-judicial report. And also, just so the Assembly knows, some of my staff will be attending the, we are able to attend this year, the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks Conference, so some of us will be out of the office Thursday and Friday.
Any comments on the citizen and other correspondents being presented? You got about 24 items for your review. Here, none. They are presented. Madam Clerk, the IMs?
IM 21221, reporting the conclusion of contract for bid 20-101B with Collins Construction Incorporated for the final contract amount of $4,110,570, excuse me, $577.10 for the Madness Casino Borough Public Safety Building 61 renovation. In addition, IM 21224, reporting the conclusion of contract for bid 21090B with CYS Enterprises LLC for a final contract amount of $848,055 for the Houston Middle School demolition. IM 21230, reporting of the conclusion of contract for bid number 2111B with Roger Hickel Contracting Incorporated for Shirley Town Bridge Repair Project. IM 21231, reporting of, excuse me, reporting of conclusion of contract for bid 21168B with the Alaska Diversified Contractors LLC for construction of Self-War Gas Collection System Project. IM 21233, reporting of the conclusion of contract for bid 2111B with Northern Asphalt Construction Incorporated for a final contract amount of $365,740.27 for Alex Drive Improvements. IM 21234, reporting the conclusion of contract for bid 21031B with Northern Asphalt Construction Incorporated for a final contract amount of $386,038.72 for the Birch Lake Drive Sims Road and Spruce Court Improvement Project.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Any comments on the IMs? Here, none. The IMs are presented as read. We're going to move to public hearings at this point in time. You will have three minutes to testify on each item that we bring before you. For the people who testify by telephone, once you hear the item you want to speak to read into the record, please hit star three. You will hear your hand has been raised. You will know it's your time to speak when you hear your line has been unmuted. Then please state your name for the record and spell your last name. We're going to go to the, we're going to take two ordinances together. Ordinance 21095 and ordinance 21096, they're LIDs, both failed. So, Madam Clerk, could you read those two for us?
Ordinance 21095 and ordinance creating East Dilly Avenue Natural Gas Local Improvement District Number 623, approving the improvement plan for the district, authorizing the manager to proceed with the improvement and assessing equally among the properties within the district the cost of the improvement. Also, ordinance 21096, an ordinance creating East Grizzly Bear Drive Road Paving Local Improvement District Number 626, approving the improvement plan for the district, authorizing the manager to proceed with the improvement and assessing equally among the properties within the district the cost of the improvement.
Okay, I'm going to have Ms. Hindell do a quick staff report for us on, and explain that they did fail and what happens.
Through the Assembly to the mayor, I'm Cheyenne Hindell, Finance Director. Both of these LIDs failed to get the 50% required yes votes. East Dilly Avenue only got 40%, and East Grizzly Bear Drive got 16% yes votes. So, the recommendation is that these need to fail.
Okay, thank you.
Did she say 16%?
Both failed substantially. So, I'll open the public hearings for both of these ordinances and unless there's objection, I'm going to close the public hearing and have a Assemblymember hail move both of the ordinances, and then you vote on them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinances 21-095 and 21-096.
Okay, any further discussion? As Ms. Hindell stated, and I believe that the attorney would say the same thing, they did not pass it ballot, so these need to fail, but we need you to vote. So, go ahead and vote at this time on both ordinances. Or, Madam Clerk, do you want to do one at a time?
No, they can go ahead and press it in this chair.
Your vote will be for both ordinances. Both ordinances failed, so you should vote no.
Well, thanks for telling us, sir.[1580.13][1580.13](Laughter)
I was about to ask to clarify the vote, but thank you.
Just wanted to be clear.
Mr. Mayor, they failed unanimously.
There's, that went very well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, ordinance 21097, Madam Clerk. And thank you, Assembly, on those two.
An ordinance creating Tulsa Avenue and Elkin Street Natural Gas Local Improvement District Number 634, approving the improvement plan for the district, authorizing the manager to proceed with the improvement, and assessing equally among the properties within the district the cost of the improvement.
Okay, staff report.
Through the mayor to the Assembly. This LID passed with 78% of the property owners voting for it, so it's ready to go.
Any questions for Ms. Hindell? Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Do we have a sign-up list? Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this pavement LID? Any telephonics? Anybody want to talk on this one? See and none. I'll close the public hearing at this time. A Assemblymember, Summer, could you move this for us, please?
I move to adopt ordinance 21-097.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah. How do you want us to vote on this one?[1665.82][1665.82](Laughter)
This would be a yes, Mr. Dee. You can vote any way you want, but yes is a good one. Any objection to passing this LID? 78% of the people wanted it. Okay, see and no objection, that LID passed. Madam Clerk, 21097.
21103, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance approving the addition of the regular full-time fire service area assistant for the Willow and Caswell Fire Service Areas and approving a supplemental appropriation of $54,615 from both the Willow and Caswell Fire Service Areas Fund balance accounts to the respective fiscal year 2022 operating budget for wages and benefits for the new position for the period January 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2022.
Thank you. Staff report?
Assembly Manager Brian Davis, Deputy Director of Fire, standing in for Director Barkley, who's on a much-needed vacation this week, so he's out of town. We ask you to support ordinance 21103, as amended by Assemblywoman Bovee, for a full-time fire service area position, fire service area assistant position for the Talkeetna and Caswell Fire Service Areas. As you guys know, Willow-Caswell is our northernmost active fire service area except for Talkeetna, starts about mile 61 in the parks, covers all the way up to mile 95.5, or about 160 square miles. Currently, Willow and Caswell do operate as two distinct fire service areas, however, with a common fire department. They both operate as one essentially. Right now, they have one position already. It's split between the two of them, so essentially each service area has a half position right now working for them. Back in July, the Caswell Board Supervisors approached us requesting another position based on community need and workload at the fire department. And again, as the taxpayers and residents of the area, we took that very seriously, looked into it, and also support the request. We then approached the Willow Fire Service Area Board of Supervisors, who also approved the position. who also approved the position unanimously. This will fund the position for six months between January and July, at which time next year it'll be built in the operating budget with no mill rate increase. Our mill rates for that area has been flat since 2016 and we intend on leaving it so. This position will support the fire chief with administrative functions, including training, fire prevention, public education, and the day-to-day operations of the fire department. And one on duty and network responding on calls as well. Call volume has been increasing consistently across the borough for the last 10 years. It's been a big impact in that area as well. You guys have seen a lot of high-profile incidents such as flooding, fires, and other such events. So at this time, because of these needs, we're requesting this position to be added.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Key, I guess we might have a question.
Hold on. Yes, I do. Through the Mayor. This $54,615, does that include the borough's contribution toward the state retirement system, which is positionable being?
Yes, it's all inclusive.
And that does include it. What is its salary then?
Yes, I'll confirm with Finance, but our understanding was that it's the all-inclusive cost of PERS, wages, benefits, and everything.
And healthcare?
And healthcare, yes, sir.
That's $12,200 in healthcare alone.
All of that is included in that number.
Okay. I want to hear from the Finance Director.
Yes, through the Assembly, through the Mayor, to Assemblymember McKee. That includes all wages and benefits for that position, the $54,000.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay, so we're concluded with the staff report, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have a sign up? No, Madam Clerk says no sign up list. Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this? Ordinance 21-103. Any telephonics? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time. Ms. Bovee, could you move this, please?
I move to adopt ordinance 21-103, and I have an amendment.
Go ahead, please.
I move to amend ordinance serial number 21-103, and I am 21-201 by striking $54,615 and inserting in his place $27,307.50 throughout the legislation. This amendment is necessary as the incorrect amounts were listed in the legislation. So the $54,000 was the cost for an entire year, and this legislation is only funding the next six months until it can be rolled into the budget next year.
Okay, what was that number again? 27?
Half of 54.
Okay, everybody got the amendment? Any objection to the amendment, Mr. McKee?
I want to ask the Finance Director.
Okay.
You just testified that the $54,000 for the six months, she's saying $27,000. Who's right?
Through the Mayor to Assemblymember McKee. Ms. Bovee is right. When we provided the numbers to DES for the wages and benefits, we provided them both 100% and half, and they picked up the half as half for each fire service area.
Okay, satisfied, Mr. McKee?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay. Any objection to the amendment which cuts it in half?
No, go ahead.
Okay, no objection to the amendment, the amendment which cuts it in half is accepted. Any objection to the ordinance itself now is?
You.
You objected? Okay.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
We are essentially a volunteer fire department.
You gotta push that little mic on.
These are, this is not a metropolitan fire department, folks. This is essentially a country fire department out there, and we keep adding positions to it. What we had 16 and 13 in the last year. And now this one, okay? I think that they're growing by leaps and bounds. Pretty soon, we'll have to get more equipment for, more equipment because they won't have enough cars to sit in.
You're trying for more quotes on your T-shirt, aren't you? Ms. Bovee, then Ms. Hale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, the Willow Fire Department has half of one position funded, and the Caswell Fire Department has half of one position funded. They share a fire chief. If this goes through, each department will have one full-time position, which is not excessive. Thank you.
Excuse me, then this ordinance is wrong. Then this ordinance is wrong. She's saying it's gonna create a fire chief. This says it's an assistant fire chief. Right there in front of me, on this thing, right here, guys. Read it.
Ms. Bovee?
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. This is not creating a fire chief. We have a fire chief that we share between two departments. This is creating a full-time fire assistant position.
Okay, any objection? Oh, Mr. Hale, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the 18 and the 13 that we hired over the last couple of years were EMS. They weren't fired.
Okay, any objection to passing this ordinance? Mr. McKee objects, so Madam Clerk, could you go ahead and vote, please?
Mr. Mayor, it passed with Assemblymember McKee opposed.
Okay. Let's go on to ordinance 21-105 and Resolution 21-107, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance approving the addition of, excuse me, I just did that one. Ordinance 21-105 and ordinance accepting and appropriating additional $100,000 from the Alaska State Department of Health and Social Services to provide financial assistance to the borough for COVID-19 vaccine support services with accompanying Resolution 21-107, a resolution approving the extended timeframe and revised budget for the Alaska State Department of Health and Social Services grant to provide financial assistance to the borough for COVID-19 vaccine support services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's do the staff report.
Through the Mayor to the Assembly. As stated in the, by the Clerk, this grant is an accepted appropriate of $100,000. It additionally extends the length of service of this grant to December 31st, so we can continue to provide COVID vaccination support and supplies.
Okay, thank you. We'll open the public hearing at this time. I don't believe there's a sign up list. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this ordinance and resolution? Any telephonics? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Assemblywoman Bovee, please move this.
I move to adopt ordinance 21-105 and Resolution 21-107.
Any discussion? Any objection to passing this ordinance and resolution? Seeing no objection, that legislation passes. Madam Clerk, 21-106 and Resolution 21-112.
An ordinance accepting and appropriating $50,000 from the Palmer Volunteer Fire Association for improvements to the driveway and parking pad for Greater Palmer Fire Service Area Station 33 located on Lazy Mountain. With accompanying Resolution 21-112, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for improvements to the driveway and parking pad for Greater Palmer Fire Service Area Station 33 located on Lazy Mountain.
Okay, thank you. Staff report.
Through the Mayor to the Assembly. This money is part of the community grants that we give out for state revenue sharing. Lazy Mountain decided to award their $50,000 to the volunteer fire department. They in turn wanted to improve the parking lot. So they are turning that money back to us, and our staff will do the work.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Madam Clerk says there's no sign up list. Any telephonics? Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Therefore, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Assemblywoman Nowers, could you move this?
I will move it, but it's technically in Assemblymember Hale's district. Okay, use my Tim Hale voice. I move to adopt ordinance 21-106 and Resolution 21-112.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Hale. Okay, go ahead. You want to speak on it?
I would like, I would love to speak to it. So this is something that the Lazy Mountain Community Council has been working on for a couple of years now. They are not a nonprofit organization, so they actually can't spend any of the money that we give them through the community revenue sharing grants. So they have to find creative ways to make projects happen in their, in their district, even though they can't spend the money themselves. So I really appreciate y'all's support in getting driveway and parking pad on the fire department tuned up. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Nowers?
I did have kind of sort of one question, comment on. I think this is a good project, and I like how they're being creative with the funding to find for it. I just, maybe it's more of a commenting thing. It seemed like the groundwater issue is what's causing the cracking in the driveway, so I just wondered, or maybe just asked that hopefully they're, they're looking at that so they don't end up in a situation that they're, you know, paving and then having to pave again and fix it constantly.
Okay, any further discussion? Any objection to passage of this legislation? Seeing and hearing none, it is passed. Okay, ordinance 21-107 and Resolution 21-113, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance accepting and appropriating $1 million from the Alaska State Department of Commerce, Community, and Economic Development for the 2024 Arctic Winter Games with accompanying Resolution 21-113, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget and authorizing the manager to enter into a grant agreement for the 2024 Arctic Winter Games.
Thank you. Staff report.
Through the Mayor to the Assembly. This $1 million accepted appropriate is the first of $1 million that the state has promised us. In total, they have promised us $2 million for the Arctic Winter Games. We have received this money and will be working with law to get an agreement together for the whole society.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing at this time. I don't believe there's a sign up list. Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this legislation? It's receipt of the $1 million from the State of Alaska to further the Arctic Winter Games. Any telephonics? I will close the public hearing at this time. Assemblywoman Bovee, could you move it?
I move to adopt ordinance 21-107 and Resolution 21-113.
Okay, any objection to passing this legislation? Mr. McKee?
I just have a question for the Finance Director. Now, you, the state said they are going to give us $2 million, right? That was the original figure they came up with?
Through the Mayor to Assemblymember McKee, yes.
Okay, and so where's the other million?
The way it is structured, they are giving us $1 million now, and then they will give us the rest later. So it was, the $1 million was budgeted in this year's state budget, and we will wait and see the rest of it budgeted in the next two years.
It sounds like the check is in the mail to me.
Another T-shirt quote. Okay, any objection to passing this legislation? Seeing none, that legislation does pass, and we accept the $1 million, and we thank the State of Alaska. And hope they keep the further funding. Okay. Where are we at now, Madam Clerk? Ordinance 21-108? Okay, go ahead, please.
An ordinance accepting and appropriating $156,000, $156,030 from the Madness Casino Convention and Visitors Bureau for the Gateway Visitor Center with accompanying Resolution 21-114, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for the Gateway Visitor Center.
Staff report.
Through the Mayor to the Assembly. The borough has applied for an EDA grant to build the Gateway Visitor Center. As you know, part of that match was the sales price of the original building and land. This $156,000 that the Matsui Visitors and Visitor Center has given us is to make up the rest of that match.
Any questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. I don't believe there's a sign up list. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this grant? Any telephonics? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Assemblywoman Bovee, could you move this for us?
I move to adopt ordinance 21-108 and Resolution 21-114.
Okay, any objection to passage? Hearing none and seeing none, that legislation passes. Madam Clerk, Resolution 21-115.
A resolution approving a list of potential federally funded infrastructure projects.
Okay. Staff report. Okay, Mr. Managers can handle this.
So this resolution is to obtain Assembly approval for projects that the Assembly supports administration pursuing should federal funding become available through a federal infrastructure bill or via other federal revenue. Many of these projects have already been in the Assembly's previous legislative priorities. There are a couple of new projects related to Port McKenzie regarding a potential bulk fuel storage facility and natural gas extension in addition to the LNG plant expansion and rail access. This project is the project that was recently passed in a separate resolution by the Assembly and was the project included in our EDA Build Back Better Regional Challenge Grant submission. Finally, we included a narrative for what natural gas expansion to Willow might include for the Assembly to consider in this resolution and as a project in future priorities. So as you've seen federally, they finally were able to move the infrastructure bill into law. So we are expecting, and I think one of the Assemblymembers asked a question to Mr. Spolden earlier, this is posturing to have authority from the Assembly to go and lobby on behalf of these various projects. So we've been talking about this. It was introduced a couple of weeks ago, so we could kind of get it out into the public space and have conversation. I know there are a number of amendments that are gonna be proposed this evening. What this really does is give staff the ability to go out and shop this around with our state delegation, the governor's office, et cetera, around how we might like to see some of that infrastructure money come to the Matsui if possible. I think we're in a better position than some folks in terms of being able to create these projects, talk about scope, and provide cost estimates. So staff are prepared to answer any questions you may have around specific questions, or specific projects. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Mike Claywater, I think we have you signed up for this legislation, so go ahead, please.
I just shut it off. Perfect. Hi, my name is Mike Claywater. I live up in the Willow area. And just to put RS 21-115, which I'm asking your support for on the map, Lynx Lake Road is on mile 64 of the Parks Highway, about five miles north of Houston on the south side of Willow. And it's kind of a small little dirt road, which you've probably driven by dozens and dozens of times and not paid much attention. But about a mile in off the Parks Highway, there's a small bridge, one-lane bridge that accesses the west side of Nancy Lake and actually crosses over the exit creek for Nancy Lake. And it looks like it doesn't access much in the, in the, in the backwoods there. But one rainy Saturday morning this past summer, I flew around on the borough's website, on the my property overlook, and tallied up over 137 lots, 40-acre parcels, small lakeside lots, totaling up more than $7.3 million in assessed value. And inclusive of that are four large borough lots, which total over 100, or excuse me, 1,900 acres with an assessed value of over $600,000. Lynx Lake Road is approximately five miles long and terminates at 120-acre church camp, which supports about 75 kids in the summer months and about 25 support staff. One lane in, one lane out. And with recent fires that we've had in the Willow area there, both the Sockeye and the Denali Fires to the north and to the south of that, Miller's Reach Big Lake Fire, that Nancy Lake area and Lynx Lake Road sits in sort of the unburned zone. And all the fire staff that I've talked with, both with the borough and state forestry here in Palmer, indicate it's not a matter of if, but when situation when fire rises, wildfires particularly. And Lynx Lake Road's been identified as a fire corridor by state forestry in Palmer. And in fact, they've started what they call a shaded fuel break along that road to try and give a defense point for wildfires in the area. In addition, Borough EMS, Fire, Water Rescue utilize that road and bridge to access back in there. We've got gravel trucks, fuel trucks, septic trucks, maintenance equipment, heavy equipment, spinard builders and other trucks that would utilize that road and corridor for future construction. And with that summary, you know, basically increased development, increased tax base, improved emergency services, and maintaining existing services. I'd recommend your support of RS 21-115. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Tam and Vern and Mr. McKee for their dedicated service over the years, too.
Thank you. Okay, we've, that's our new high alert warning system, by the way. Okay, we have a lot of people signed up on their audience participation, I think, want to speak on this subject, so. to speak on this subject. So Barbara Gerard, would, is this?
Good evening, Mayor Vern Halter, Borough Assembly Members and Borough Staff. My name is Barbara Gerard. I am the Road Service Area on the, or I'm part of the Road Service Area Board of Directors for North Colony 23. A month or so ago, I thought that when the assembly took action and removed the Herman Showers Road Project from the bond, that the bond, that this road was gone. You can imagine my surprise when I opened up my monthly RSA board packet and discovered not only was the Herman Showers Road Project still alive, it was now going to be placed on the RSA's shoulders to pay for it. I quickly learned that it was also ninety-five percent complete. And that eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar project would be shared by North Colony 23 with us paying eighty-seven percent of that and the RSA sixteen paying thirteen percent of that. And the craziest piece of it all, the property owners in both areas, they didn't seem to be knowing about it at all. So we held a Road Service Area Community Meeting and it was publicized. And Road Superintendent Will Berkman joined us via Zoom and Cole Brannan, the Herman Showers Project Manager, came in person. They were really knowledgeable in sharing the facts and the ninety-five percent completed plans. And we learned that the project was an eighth of a mile in length and that it would connect this side of the valley with Fish Hook and it would intersect at Norman Avenue. And the project had actually begun in early twenty nineteen. Now, we, North Colony RSA 23 unanimously voted to write a resolution and submit it at the next assembly meeting, which is this one, stating that we really just don't want Herman Showers connected over to the other side. We do not want a thoroughfare and we don't want an expressway connecting Palmer Fishhook to the Glen Highway. We do not want the traffic, we don't want the noise, and we don't want the worry about who's passing on our road near where our children and grandchildren are playing. This resolution asks you, our assembly, to request an immediate halt to any further work on this project and withdraw it totally. Now, when I arrived at the meeting, Public Works Director Terry Dolan said that road is dead. But I thought it was already once and I want to make sure that it really is this time. And so we requested it through the resolution with all of the correct whereas's and therefore's that this road be pleased removed from the future. And I can submit this later.
Rachel Gerard.
Good evening, Mayor, Borough Assembly and Borough Staff. My name is Rachel Gerard. I own five acres on Lupine Road in RSA 23. I grew up in this area and when five acres down the road from my parents and my sister came available, I immediately sold my house in Palmer and moved back up there because I wanted my children to grow up and have this same environment and lifestyle I had growing up. Punching through a road connecting Palmer Fishhook to the Glen through the Herman Showers Extension will cause the business of the valley to come to our neighborhood. We do not want the added traffic or the noise of the traffic. We want our community to remain quiet and remote. I want our children to be able to ride their bikes or even walk without the worry of who is cutting through our neighborhood. I understand the borough's goal was to provide a secondary exit, but we as neighbors in RSA 23 do not want this. Please stop all further planning and design of this product. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Austin Grimes.
Hi, I'm Austin Grimes and I'm one of the new RSA Board Members for North Colony 23. In less than four days, a hundred and forty-one property owners from RSA North Colony 23, along with some property owners from Showers Neighborhood, signed a petition asking that the Herman Showers Project be halted. That's right, in four days, a hundred and forty-one people signed a petition. It was a fun weekend getting in and out of cars and meeting our neighbors. So you may be asking yourself why so many property owners in North Colony 23 are against the Herman Showers Road Extension. And this is what I learned as I listened and spoke with my neighbors. My neighbors like living on the four to five acre lots where it is quiet and the only traffic coming in and out are our neighbors. They bought in this area because it is remote. And when they purchased their property, they knew that there was only one way in and they knew there was one way out. And they liked that fact. My neighbors are the type of people that keep to themselves, mostly, but if you have a problem or need help, you can count on them in a drop of a hat. It is kind of like the old Alaska where your neighbors are your friends, but you only see them occasionally, but you can depend on them always. My neighbors like being informed. That is something I learned repeatedly and feeling like they are in control. So when they learned that a project to extend the road was ninety-five percent complete in planning and they never had been notified or asked for input, they were frustrated. When they learned that this road would connect this side of the valley to that side of the valley, meaning the Glen with Palmer Fishhook, my neighbors began to worry about the type of people that might pass through our neighborhood. Because this is where our children play, one of our neighbors said, we don't want any more traffic. Heck, I don't even want someone driving out here on a Sunday. A few of the neighbors shared, we can't afford new taxes. And when they were told that this project could be added to the federal infrastructure monies and they'd pay nothing, they said, what do you mean? That is our money, too. And we don't want even a dime spent on the road. And not to kid ourselves because nothing is free. What I learned is my neighbors really like where they live and they don't want it to change. They raised their families here and their children grew up here and built their homes here, too. We, our community, treasure what we have. It is precious and we are asking you to help us to keep it just the way it is. Please halt all further work on the Herman Showers Road Extension. We don't want it and we don't need it. Thank you for your time, your consideration and for listening to your neighbors.
Thank you. Joe Gerard.
Thanks for this opportunity to speak. I'm kind of related to some of these people here. They're very eloquent in what they said, but we have property on what's called Lupin Road, which borders the new proposal for the Herman Road. And that road, before we went out there, where, I mean, we've been living out there now for thirty-seven years. And when we went out there, there were big lots, no covenants, access to trails. In fact, the reason we went out there was I had a dog team and I could actually run my dogs down that Herman easement and across Whistler Creek and hit, go all the way to Sutton and come back. So those days are gone. My wife's quite glad about that. But that trail is still used. People ski there, people use snow machines, they use the four wheelers, you name it. It's a recreational trail, basically, for people to get out to Buffalo Mine or the Moose Preserve. So when I look at issues, I try to think of advantages and disadvantages. Yes, we'll get, you know, another exit from our subdivision. You know, we can go out. Well, that advantage is actually a disadvantage because there's people that can come in. And I think it was eloquently stated by these people that we just don't want that many people coming through. The intersection of Herman and Norman is such that you come down Norman Drive and it's steep and in no time at all, you're right there at Herman. Already, we've had issues with people having near collisions. But also, once that road is punched through to Fishhook, that's going to be the way that people go to get to the Glen, to when they go hunting and recreational, things like that. So we're going to have people coming out there. You go down Norman and Norman is like two miles of a straightaway. It's like a drag strip. And those people are going to fly. You know, they want to get on with their vacation and their fun. And I can't, you know, fault them for that, but it's just the natural tendency for long straightaways. So really what we want is it to remain the same. It's, you know, I can't say that anymore and I'm opposed to it changing. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Is it Jared Moss? There we go. I couldn't read the second name. You can take that right next to you.
Whatever. There you go. Well, my name's Cheryl Melbry and I'm the one right on the corner. I'm on the one receiving end of the, where they're going to do it and we were there, been there twenty years. And it's just, it's too much traffic. I mean, that hill, I've watched people, I'm waiting for somebody to end up in my yard. That's how close I am to it. And I'm a country boy. I like being in the country, even though I'm in a roller skate. But it's, it's where I like to be. And it's the first home I've ever bought and I figured I'd be there until the day I die. And if they chop it all up, which they're going to do, if they get away with it, I won't have nothing left. I mean, I got an acre and a third there and if they do the intersection right there, it's going to be, they're going to take part of it then and it's being taken. It isn't going to be, I'm not going to be treated fairly, it's just the way it is. And then if they fix the road a little farther down, they're going to take the lower part of it and so I'm on a fixed income. I can't just pack up and move and it's just, it's just not right in my book. We just don't need it. We don't need the people. When I was coming down here to this, just coming home or coming down here, I bet there was thirty cars that turned down that road. When I first moved up there, there wasn't. You'd see ten or twelve, maybe, all day long. It's just getting, the traffic would just get atrocious. And we're not city people. We don't want to live in town. If we did, we'd move into Palmer. That's why we live out there. And I've just, I've just been lucky for living out there. I'm glad I do. And that's about all I got to say. Just, they need to halt it.
Okay, thank you. Dustin Renter.
So I've lived over forty years in this area and it's a wonderful place to live, you know? It's one of the few areas left that's unrestricted. And those of us that, you know, overall, the majority of the subdivision is unrestricted. We like that. We like the quietness, we like the atmosphere, we like everything about the area. And you know, one of the things that really bothered me was when Austin told me what was going on and I started talking to, I got a lot of family and friends and know most people out there. I was, like her, just really upset that we weren't made aware of what was going on before money was being spent and these plans were made. You'd think that we would at least be involved in the conversation. No, we weren't. So I have some concerns. Number one, one of the things that I see is as this connection is made, just like a couple of the other people had alluded to, anyone coming from the Sutton, you know, Glen Allen direction across into the upper parts of the valley, as people start to realize this connection is there, there's no way that they're not going to be using it to cut across because it's going to save a lot of time. People coming from the other side are going to do the same thing. People fly through that subdivision already. You know, there's so much traffic already that I can't even imagine what this is going to do to all of us that live here and like this little quiet place in the valley. I also wonder as time goes on, you know, we're going to have a little bit bigger road, we're going to have a lot more traffic. None of us want to have to pay for the rest of the valley using our roads either, cutting across as they're making their, you know, travels east, east to west. And really, you know, and I understand that maybe some of the funding could be used from the infrastructure bill and if that's the case, it's, you know, this might not be so important. But if not, none of us want to pay for something that we don't want. You know, and we spent quite a bit of time this weekend going around and talking to people. And I think of all the people we talked to and reached out, I think there was only two or three people that we talked to that had any positive things to say about this plan and were in any way, shape or form in favor of it. Everybody else was absolutely not. So I think it's really clear, this community, just like, you know, you said, Matsu Borough's a great place to live and you want to keep it that way. Well, our area is a great place to live and we want to keep it that way, too. And we would just really appreciate you guys saying no to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Dan Saiken? Saiken? Say that again?
Oh, man.
Some of the, some of the writing I can't read quite as well as I should.
Don Sekus.
Okay.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Don Sekus and my wife Beverly Sekus and I have lived up there in the Road Service Area 23 for forty-plus years and raised a family there. And I have some real concerns also about this project. There are lots of issues at stake here, but I'll only take a few moments so our assembly members can appreciate our concerns. It was brought to our attention by Cole Brannan, who works in the planning department at the borough. That fifth Herman Avenue to Shower Street is only phase one. Phase two ties in, ties it in with Boyd Road to Palmer Fishhook. So what will phase three, four and five look like? He says they're not trying to sneak anything through. It's been in planning stages for several years. I am wondering how Joe Public accesses this information without spending hours researching it. We have two very competent women representing this Road Service Area and they were taken by surprise, as we all were. Cole Brannan said they were looking out for our best interest in this proposal. One reason being we have only one way in and one way out. There are always pros and cons to most situations. My wife and I believe there are, there will be increased traffic, which will undoubtedly lead to increased crime and an increased safety hazard for kids and adults riding their bikes and walking along the road. We bought in a subdivision, not along a highway. Lots of subdivisions pride themselves as gated communities, one way in, one way out, as I do with ours, except we don't need a gate. I won't even get into the total waste of money in these depressed times. Please remove this proposal from the books and then throw the books away. Thank you.
Okay. Bev? Bev Sekus?
So I'm the wife. I actually had written up some stuff, too, but, and I have the same concerns as everyone else here on the, of the traffic. And, and honestly, I think one of the, yes, the traffic and, but it's the, it's the cost that is, really, every time I think about it, I'm like, now, wait a second. I was one of the people that went around on all Norman Avenue and had got signatures. And I got a lot of signatures and they, they don't want their taxes to go up, but they don't want the, the traffic. And I'm kind of forgetting where I'm going here, but the cost, if they're not wanting it, and I'm understanding that the other Road Service Area sixteen, I think it is, they're not crazy about it either, I don't understand why we're paying for a road eight tenths of a mile. It's a power line. To us, it's our power line, but it's not ours, I realize that, it's a public easement. But I just don't understand why we're paying for eighty-seven percent of this road that we don't want. And that's just the initial cost. Somebody's got to plow it and the upkeep of it. So it's an ongoing expense for our neighborhood. And my understanding, I mean, I've kind of checked out the mill levy for our Road Service Area. We have one of the highest in the, in the borough and we're not a rich neighborhood, you know? So I'm just, along with everything else, it just doesn't make sense to me that we are paying for a road we don't want. Thank you.
Okay. Jessica Drummond.
I'm going to keep it real short because my neighbors were very well researched and eloquent. I just want to get on public record saying I second everything they say. I grew up in that neighborhood and I convinced my husband that if we were going to move back to Alaska, we were going to live in this neighborhood for everything that it stood for. And so to quote Mayor Halter, thank you so much for this quote, by the way. because I didn't quite know what I was gonna say. But I'm just gonna end with, we live on the best place on earth and we wanna keep it that way. Thank you.
You're hired. Robert Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Assembly for allowing me to speak tonight. I'll try to keep my comments short. I am requesting, as a property owner in the Herman Avenue area, that the Assembly withdraw this project. It is financially irresponsible to spend money on this project that is both unneeded and unwanted by the property owners in the Herman area and Showers area. Furthermore, as I understand this project, it will be taxed to the property owners on one end, Herman end, fivefold what the Showers end will be taxed. It is incomprehensible and unethical to commit the property owners to the increased property tax to pay for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Brian Endel. See still, there he is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the Assembly and staff. Brian Endel, 12951 East Herman Avenue. So I live on Herman Avenue. I'm well aware of, you know, what's going on here from talking to some of my neighbors and listening to them tonight. Now, I live on the east side of Herman Avenue. You've, you've basically heard and will hear from people that live from one side of Herman or Norman all the way to the other. I don't see any benefit for putting this road through at this point in time. There's, you know, it will, will increase traffic like people have said. But, you know, what benefit will it provide the community? And I don't see any benefit at this point in time because the maintenance will be higher, the taxes will be higher. And as one person mentioned already, you know, we're taxed pretty heavily there, in that area. So with all those issues and, and someone mentioned Norman Avenue and the traffic that goes through Norman Avenue. Well, the traffic that goes through Norman Avenue, I've seen sports cars go through there at much higher than 50 miles an hour. And it's, Norman Avenue is basically a straight shot. So what, what I would suggest here is that if possible, you know, take that money for maintenance and, or take the money and use it for maintenance rather than for creating this road. I don't understand how the, you know, Barbara Gerard's been in this area for quite so many years. And I don't understand why, you know, the people in the borough weren't listening to her about this area. I, I think that, you know, this project should be, should be canceled. And if there's another way, and I think at a previous meeting that Mr. Gerard actually did suggest a different way to connect these things, you might wanna look into that before we go do this one. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and the Assembly, thank you for allowing me the privilege here tonight to talk about this subject. And I've been back there for 45 years. You know, years ago, we used to go down that road and we used to count the mufflers that we'd find on the side of the road, which was, you know, that's a few years back, but we love it back there. You know, I think you've heard all of the pros and cons here for the most part, but I'm gonna make an emotional appeal here. We're talking about communities, okay? And, you know, communities, once you crack the egg, that community starts to disappear. And, you know, I was sitting there thinking about my concerns about it. I mean, you know, I'm there, I've been there, I've got, well, I've got darn near three generations back there now. And I've got grandkids standing in line asking me, man, do I get this when you're gone? Because they love it back there. So I took a little trip over to the Shower's side. And my goodness, you think it's gonna hurt us over on the Norman side? Those people over on Showers are on one acre lots, less than 100 feet from the road. I went by there on a cold day, zero. And here's a gentleman out there walking his dog. Here's a family, wife, father, three kids, walking down the road. This road is gonna turn into a drag strip. So the point here is, Vern, you hit a homerun early in the show. When you said you, how many years you set on this up in front of here and you did it because you love the borough. And you know what? You wanna keep it that way. I'm here tonight to say that these people that are voicing here tonight want the same thing. I think we can do things a little better, maybe in the future. But the real issue here tonight is to protect these communities and why these people live in these communities. So I ask that you help us out here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's why we have these public hearings. They seem to work. Okay, I, that's all we have on this signup list. We're talking about the Resolution 21115 and the projects that go underneath it. So, okay, if you wanna come and speak on this, come on forward. We're kinda in the Herman Showers issue right now, I guess. Or any, and anything within 21115 too.
Good evening. Good evening, folks, friends, neighbors and fellow Palmer folks. Hey, I own about 20%.
State your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Charles Renner.
Okay, thank you.
I live on Lupin Road. And I have two parcels on that, that face that proposed road development. I have about 750 feet on that. I've been up there for 36 years. I myself have raised a family there. The, when, that was a bend, a power line road with an easement for the MEA for a long, long time. Then the gentleman sold off some acreage and the two other folks bought some property back there. And they put in a Pioneer Road. Now, I went down there when they were putting in the Pioneer Road and I met with the borough easement draker or manager there and I spoke with him about that. And these gentlemen had put in that driveway themselves, Pioneer Road themselves. They didn't get any help from the borough. When I spoke to the gentleman, your representative down there, he told me three years ago that they were not in the road building business. Now, I found out that there was a proposed road there. I went down to the borough here to check on it. And then later I found out that it was dead and it was gonna be, gone away. Now it appears that it's resurrected, but nobody knew about it. I wasn't informed. And I have probably, maybe 20% of the, of the affected property on the north side. And no, I'm not happy about it at all. The 83% that we're gonna end up, or the taxes that we're gonna be hit with that is, is just out of this world. It's, it's unrealistic. If you want another avenue for ingress and regress, to get people out in case of a wildfire, Jensen Avenue is your road. Have you looked at it? I don't know. But I myself do not support this action. And as you can see, there are quite a few people here this evening from a real small neighborhood of five acre tracts. They're almost all here and none of them support it. So what's going on? Who do we trust? No, there's not gonna be a road. No, we're not in the road building business. All of a sudden, we're in the road building business. We don't want half-truths. We want this thing put to bed. We don't want it to proceed any further than what it at, what it is, where it's, I'm tongue-tongued. We want it dead. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Yeah, come on forward, please. Anybody else wants to speak in this? Just kinda shuffle up front here and we'll, we'll take you one at a time.
Good morning, or evening, sorry. My name is Serena Smith. I actually live on Showers. I noticed, I wasn't gonna sign up to speak tonight. I was just here to make sure this got squashed really quickly. But I noticed a lot of our neighbors that are here are from the other side of the power line easement that's back there. And honestly, I, I ride my four-wheelers back there with my kids and friends a lot. And we've been over to their road and the traffic over there is already astronomical. I was not feeling safe when I was riding my four-wheeler down there. Our road on North Showers is two lanes. And in the wintertime, it's one and a half lane. And we have property right up next to it. So our houses aren't set back like a lot of these other properties are, at all. I thought this was squashed three-plus years ago, which we were happy about because we bought our property at a dead-end road for a reason. We didn't want all the extra traffic. And, yeah, I wasn't, sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I noticed none of my Showers people were here. Most of us work odd hours. I myself am retiring from 12-hour shifts soon. So that's why I thought it was morning. So, sorry. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that North Showers is not a big road. In fact, buses won't even come down our road. They stop at Crabs, or Crab, at Crab Street and do a U-turn, sort of, by pulling onto Crab and then backing onto our street because they refuse to come that far down because they will most likely get stuck, even though it is paved. It actually ends at a turn onto Hot Showers where there is large properties, large houses and lots. And I know for a fact, none of those people want high-traffic volume next to their houses. Also, at the, at the power line that they are talking about, there is a house that was just built and they came to all the property owners and got permission to put their house even closer to the road than is allowed in our area. So imagine, to their surprise, when they did not know about this road that was going to be built literally in their front yard. So they've just spent $400,000, $500,000 on a brand-new house. What are they supposed to do with it when they have no front yard and somebody's driving right next to their house? So for me, ethically, personally, for me and my neighbors on the North Shower's side, this is, this is unacceptable that we didn't even know it was gonna happen until a couple days ago when some, one of our neighbors came over and told us about it. So I would like also this to be squashed. I'm not as eloquent as these other ladies and gentlemen, but I thought I would give my two cents on that.
You did a great job. Thank you. Ma'am, coming forward and another gentleman?
Hi, my name is Ivy Bingham. I didn't plan on speaking because I don't like speaking nor am I very good at it. But I am very passionate about, passionate about not passing this road project. I have lived on Norman my whole life. I bought my house two houses down from my parents because I love the neighborhood. And I've been there 25 years. It's quiet and if you have any sort of problem, you can count on any of your neighbors for help. My husband and I live on the corner of Norman and McCary. And at the top of McCary, which is right next to our house and our yard specifically, is very steep with a 90-degree turn at the top. To be able to get up the hill, many people go quite fast up that hill. We have a four-year-old and expecting another in the spring. And we're very concerned about the increased traffic and the danger it can cause for our children. Besides that, the cost is outrageous and people can wake up 20 minutes earlier and go around to Fish Hook. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Anthony Draino. I live on 13150 East Norman Avenue. It's the corner of Smith and Norman. My neighbors really said it all. But I would like to go on record and testify that I'm also opposed. We have, we have a real problem with people speeding on, on the road. It's nothing like when we were growing up. My kids aren't allowed to go on the street unless my wife and I are out there. And if this happens, they won't be able to, we won't be able to go on the street at all. No bicycles, no roller skates, none of those things. So for the record, I'm opposed. And thank you for your time and consideration regarding this matter.
Thanks for coming in. Sir, come on forward, yes.
Good evening. My name is Paul Caldente. I'm Mr. Draino's neighbor. Everybody has already said it, but I just wanted to go on record as well and say that it may sound like a good idea, having an extra exit from that neighborhood, but it seems like not many people are willing to give up having a, a neighborhood the way we have it for, for that luxury. So we're willing to take that, having only one entrance and exit in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, anyone else wish to speak? I think we've got the issue pretty well clear in our minds. I'm not sure. But any telephonics? Okay, we got a couple telephonics. So let's go to our telephone, telephone callers. So first caller, go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Gretchen Kime and I'm a property owner in the Silkstone area, like my neighbors who are all there physically this evening. My husband and I chose the Silkstone area of the valley after living in the greater Ossila area for 17 years because we value a quiet lifestyle without the noise, congestion and bother of traffic and people. There are many reasons we're not agreeable to this project. First, there wasn't any notice received by the households in this area pertaining to the project and asking for our input. Last summer, we received notice regarding an airstrip somewhere off Palmer Fish Hook that would possibly impact our property, but no notice of a road project that would certainly impact my property with speed. Our own RSA 22 committee wasn't aware of it. Second, increased traffic in this area will only increase the noise, congestion and other problems from vehicles. Again, this does, this goes against why we and many others in this area chose to make Silkstone our home. We want peace and quiet, not traffic. Connecting these roads will certainly bring more of both from all directions. Third, our roads already have problems getting the maintenance that is due to them. One of the main roads in the neighborhood do not get the snow removal that is needed. I understand that it takes time for roads to be cleared after a snowfall, but that often doesn't happen at all. We might get a pass with a plow, but nothing else. My own road, last year, there are many snowfalls where the plow never came to plow my street out. Luckily, being Alaskans, we drive vehicles equipped to handle it. And my neighbor has plowed our entire street because the borough has failed to do its job. Why do we want another road that will not get the maintenance that is due to it? Fourth, property taxes. Our property taxes in Millard are some of the highest in the valley while our neighborhood is among some of the poorest. Silkstone is peppered with junkyards amongst modest middle-income homes with the modest, properties carrying the bulk of the tax burden. And it is a burden, I assure you. Our property taxes have more than doubled and that is definitely being felt in my household finances. It's the offices of the borough is trying to tax homeowners right out of the area for some reason. We are an neighborhood of rich folks. We are amidst of blue-collar workers, professionals and lower-income folks. Don't mistake us for mountain gloria states just because we butt up against them on the west end. Per the borough's own documentation, 87% of this project cost would fall upon us who live in RSA 22 and I feel that's grossly unfair. This while we're on the topic of taxes, I do not get why our ridiculously high pri, why our, what do we get for our ridiculously high property taxes? A whole lot of nothing as far as we are concerned. I'm not against reasonable taxes, but I feel at least like to see some results for my money. We can't even get our own road plowed after a snowfall as I mentioned above. Sadly, we see no other benefits or services. Why would we want more of that? Again, my husband and I are staunchly against this project for all the reasons my neighbors have said and for those I've shared that are of my own opinion. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
My name is Brian Greener, B-R-I-A-N-G-R-E-N-I-E-R. Mr. Mayor, is this time to comment on 111621, Bovee Possible Amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. One other point of information. Are letters that are sent in via email read before votes on, on these items and agenda?
Madam Clerk, they're provided to the Assembly through the clerk, I believe.
They are provided to the Assembly, but they're not in, right into the record at the Assembly meeting.
But some members have them in their files.
So for clarification of the point, it is possible, but not necessarily axed upon to read those letters. Well, my, my support is for the Bovee Possible Amendment. There's a bridge that's needed for access to the state park and also would help preserve fish habitat. That's my comment. Thank you very much.
So you were, you were talking about the Lynx Lake Road Bridge.
That's right. That is 111621, Bovee Possible Amendment, specifically the Lynx Lake, uh, Road Bridge.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
And, thank you.
We got that. Thank you. Okay, anyone else, any more telephonics? Anyone else in the audience wish, we're basically speaking on the resolution, but, uh, the specific road we were talking about, the Herman Showers, took up a lot of the time. Anybody else want to speak on it? Uh, I'm gonna call you in just a second under audience participation when we get done with the resolution. Is that okay? He's got an announcement he wants to make. Hunky Lee. Okay, anything, anything else? Anybody else on, uh, the resolution? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this point in time on Resolution 21115. Uh, I'll let some of them, Bovee, move it. Uh, Mr. Hale, who wants to move it?
I move to adopt Resolution 21-115.
Okay, Mr. Hale? Okay, I guess Mr. Yat had his, was up first.
I think the message is clear, and I definitely support everybody here and your concerns. I got one question for staff. It's Mr. Barkley, our Director for Fire Services, and here for the Fire Department, so I, I maybe should direct this through the mayor to the manager. But was there any recommendations? It's, this is a tough situation. We, you guys may or may not know, but in the last 10 years, 78% of the growth for the entire state was in this small community. And that's, that's not gonna change. So I just wanted to make sure, um, like I said, I'm gonna support you guys regardless, but I wanted to, out of respect for Mr. Barkley, see if there was any recommendations for fire connectivity for, to help keep you guys safe in the event of the next big fire.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, so through the mayor to Mr. Yat, I think, obviously, there's always a desire to have secondary egress, but I think it's also fair to say that there are multiple instances and cases across the borough where that is not the case.
Thank you. And I, I figured there's a bunch that aren't. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any specific recommendations. The next question I got is, can we remove this permanently, or is this something, I, I guess there's nothing that we can do as a body that's permanent, is there? I mean, this, this could come back up in five years, 10 years.
Well, I, through the mayor to Mr. Yat, I think there are ways. I mean, one, a lot of these projects will sometimes make their way through a road service area, the Assembly, uh, a RIP list. Those get approved by the Assembly, obviously. Uh, we're gonna follow up on that tomorrow with staff and find out what that exactly looks like specifically for RSA 23. Um, and then, of course, at, at times, projects will potentially make their way on a list for, like, a road po, road bond package or something along those lines. But ultimately, in the end, where it should be represented is in official streets and highways plan and/or the LRTP. I mean, those are the two big, long-term planning vehicles we have for transportation infrastructure. So ultimately, they either would or would not be included in those documents as those evolve and are updated periodically.
Thank you. And I, I mainly ask that just so everybody could hear for clarification. It is something that you guys are gonna wanna keep an eye on over the course of the next many years. And, and, uh, like I said, you got my full support in, in halting this, but, um, uh, just wanted to help you guys be aware. Thanks.
Mr. Hale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanted to thank everyone from RSA 23 coming out tonight. Um, I was, I really appreciate that. Um, I had an amendment that I was gonna offer tonight, um, to see if we could get some federal money for that Boyd-Herman Road so that the road service area wouldn't have to pay for it. I will not be offering it tonight. Um, I have, uh, I have gotten a lot of emails, uh, and telephone calls over the last, uh, 10 days from folks. In fact, I've probably heard from about two-thirds of the folks who live in the Soapstone neighborhood saying that they don't want this road, uh, no matter how it's paid for. And so, um, I really appreciate you folks coming out here tonight and telling us that, and I hope that, and I'm sure that, um, you know, Public Works and the manager have taken that, uh, into, into their, internalized that and have realized that this is not a road that you folks want. Um, originally, this first came on my, um, uh, into my attention when we had it on the road bond package, and I had it removed from the road bond package at the advice of the, uh, RSA board member here. Um, later on in conversation with Public Works, uh, they made a good case for the road with the secondary, uh, with the secondary access and the, uh, ease of, ease of access for emergency vehicles applying and things like that. So I thought, well, maybe we could get some federal dollars for it, um, but, uh, clearly, we, we don't want it at all. So, uh, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I was, I was wondering what was going on, because there was nothing in Resolution 21115 at this time. So, but I appreciate all the testimony. And, uh, Ms. Nowers?
Thank you. I was kinda having the, the same thing, looking for it, but, um, I just, you know, it's, it's not gonna go forward, but, um, I really get where people are coming from. As somebody who's had a coal plant, a prison, and a construction debris asbestos dump proposed near our house, like, I think this is, this is a broader issue. This is like what we love about the valley. And if we start to threaten that, you don't feel like you're, you know, you have a say. And so, um, I really get the, the sense of place and living, and how do you protect that? I mean, honestly, unless you do a community plan, you can have stuff pop in, in your neighborhood, and you won't, if it's private property, it, they can do what they want with it. Now, it's different if it's a borough project. Um, I think with these road projects, you know, we're trying to solve one problem with the population growth and making sure people have good roads, right? But you're creating another. If, if we can do a better system, I don't like how people didn't know about this. It's really hard to get that word out, but if we're proposing something in a neighborhood, I think we could look at some kind of system where we do some kind of local notification, because you cannot read through these agendas and, you know, oh, here's the one out of 5,000 things that affects my neighborhood. So, um, and then I just wanted to say on those, because I just, this wasn't something I was super familiar with as Assembly member, but it's come up a couple times. With your mill rate, with your, you have a road service area component and a fire service area component. That pays for the roads in your areas and the fire service. That's the way the borough is set up. If you don't like that system, what it's paying for, how much is being used, you have a road service area board, and you have a fire service area board. So, um, that's really local control. And I, I just mentioned that because I wasn't, like, super aware of it, even when I, um, was on the Assembly, and I just had somebody else, you know, have, they're paying 17 mills, and seven of that is road service and fire service. So, um, but just appreciating, and I really understand where folks are coming from, and I think as a body, like, what we can do to preserve why people live here while dealing with the amount of people without shutting the door. Because I've lived here 25 years, and my neighborhood's not the same as it was, and I like some of those things that were there 25 years ago. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bovee?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment.
It better not be on Herman Showers.
It's not. I'm changing the subject. I, I think we know exactly where these folks stand on that. Um, this is in your packet. I move to amend RSA 21-115, and I am 21-220 as follows. Number one, Bridges and Culverts Project List by striking number 13 Wade Drive Bridge, $1 million, and inserting in its place Lynx Lake Bridge Replacement and Bridge Access Improvements, $1.5 million. The project would improve Lynx Lake Road to a condition that allows bridge construction equipment to reach the bridge site then replace the substandard bridge with a new bridge, eliminating weight restrictions. Number two, Bridges and Culverts Section by inserting a new number 14 to read Yoder Road Bridge Replacement and Bridge Access Improvements, $4.5 million. The Yoder Road Bridge was designed and constructed in the early 1940s for the Elkan Road Project. It was repurposed in the 1980s to bridge Montana Creek on Yoder Road. The bridge is now nearly 80 years old, has been repaired a number of times for structural damage, and has a wooden deck that needs to be replaced approximately every 10 years. The project would improve Yoder Road access to and from the bridge, provide stream bank protection around the bridge abutments, and replace the bridge. And number three, to renumber the remaining sections and bridges and culverts accordingly.
Okay, everybody have that amendment? Any objection to, uh, Ms. Bovee's amendments? Lynx Lake Road and Yoder additions?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. McKee?
I just have a question. Now, uh, these amendments, have they been put before the Public Works Director for an estimate of the cost?
Mr. Manager?
Okay, secondly, then, the, the additional $500,000, he, he, they missed that. Uh, you're increasing this by that much, right?
We're, we're taking one bridge off. Wade Drive Bridge is coming off the list, and we're replacing it with Lynx Lake Bridge, which would cost more than the Wade Bridge would have. So we're taking...
And, and they have prepared a written estimate of this cost you're talking about? And this is to the manager, I guess?
Yeah, through the mayor to Mr. McKee. There are two separate projects. She's removing one bridge and replacing it with a different bridge. We have looked at the estimates for that new Lynx Lake Bridge, and, and Public Works has done the cost estimate. Rough order magnitude. We haven't had an engineer assigned to it and done any design with it.
So you really don't know the cost, then? You, you have a guesstimate, right? What in the military was known as a swag count, okay?
Uh, through the mayor to Mr. McKee. I, I wouldn't go that far, but the reality is, we put these estimates together all the time. I mean, when you just look at the recently approved transportation bond, we don't dedicate hours of engineering resources to develop these cost estimates until we know there's a public desire and an Assembly approval to move forward with those, because it's just not a great investment of time and resources to, to invest in a preliminary engineering and cost estimate that, that gives you that level of detail.
It's probably about 25 feet across that Lynx Lake connection on the road. If I'm correct, Mr. Wait, 35, excuse me. And it, it's, uh, 1.5 to me would be a fairly adequate figure to cover this, you know? But I don't know what the total, you know, the total final cost, but, but they're gonna be roadwork. Is, I'm understanding you're gonna do the roadwork from the Parks Highway to and through the bridge. Is that correct?
No, sir, that is not correct. Uh, this is just for the bridge. Uh, we'll have to do a little bit of work to get equipment into the bridge area, because the road is really essentially unconstructed. But, uh, the intent isn't to upgrade the road. We do maintain the railroad crossing right there, just a little bit off the Parks Highway, but that's the only piece of the road we maintain. It's owned and operated by, uh, DNR. It's the State of Alaska. Yes, sir.
But the bridge is ours.
The bridge is not ours. It's also owned and operated by DNR. But we certainly have the authority with a permit to replace it.
Okay, gotcha. Ms. Bovee?
So replacing this bridge has been a conversation for quite a few years, and the state is aware of the fact that it is a substandard bridge, and it is not currently rated for any of the things that, uh, Mr. Cloudwater mentioned. So fuel trucks, fire trucks, any of those things can no longer cross over this bridge. So we've been looking at an opportunity to partner with the state and to find additional funding, and we thought this might be just the opportunity to, uh, not use RSA funds, but still be able to provide, uh, emergency access to quite a large number of people. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Two?
Did I understand that the road is substandard to get to the bridge, so we have to build a substandard road up to get equipment in so we can build the bridge?
So yes, the road is substandard. Uh, it won't support heavy equipment during certain times of the year. We might have to do some limited work in order to, to get the bridge itself in there and get the equipment to install it.
Mr. McKee?
Through the mayor, and what would be the cost of upgrading that road?
We're not actually talking about upgrading the road. We're just talking about some, uh, limited temporary work in order to get equipment in and out.
But it's substandard?
It is definitely a substandard.
So you're gonna repair a bridge so that you, you can drive equipment over a substandard road to the bridge, right?
We would be replacing a bridge, uh, that can't carry emergency equipment. We're not gonna repair it. Uh, it needs to be replaced. If I'm not mistaken, uh, it's, uh, you know, it's not constructed to any kind of bridge standard. Uh, and maybe even, maybe, uh, somebody who in Bovee knows, I think it may be a railcar underneath there, which was a pretty common thing 25 years ago in the borough. Most of them, we've removed and replaced. So this is one of the few that's left. But it hasn't been on the borough's priority list because it is a DNR-operated roadway.
This road has daily traffic. It has trucks. It has cars. It has ATVs. It is well-used. I've seen bulldozers on it, dozers on it. I've seen all kinds of trucks on it. I've seen, I mean, the road isn't perfect. I will say that. But the bridge is a problem. The bridge to the other side to carry fuel and to carry things like that, to carry, uh, any type of emergency equipment, that's the problem. It used to be two old culverts that were rusted out, and now there is a wood frame-type bridge that carries a lot of weight. It amazes me what's been going over it. But really, access from the Parks Highway, I don't think is a total issue myself personally. And I've used this road a million times. But it's not perfect. Don't get, don't get me wrong. Hmm, Mr. Hale?
Yeah, so when you talk about, um, it being substandard, the whole, the kind of equipment you need to, to remove and replace the bridge, you're talking about, like, large cranes and stuff. So we're talking using rig mats to get the cranes out to the bridge and, and things of that nature. We're not talking totally reconstructing the approaches to, to support the heavy equipment. We're talking like rig mats, right?
Yes, sir, that's exactly correct.
The Bridges and Oilwell Road, at the time they were put in, would be pretty similar to this. The two crossings would be my guess. So, anything further? Thank you, Mr. Dolan.
May, uh, uh, Mayor? I, I am troubled by the thing that, that we're going to, and I understand what you're saying, replacing a bridge to, so that the traffic that's there can go over it safely. I, I don't have a problem with that. But to have a substandard road going to it, and we're just gonna leave it substandard, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Ms. Bovee?
Director Dolan, could you give us an estimate on what it costs to bring that road up to standard, please?
I, I can't give you a, an estimate. I can have staff look at that.
It's, it's what, a mile? I mean, I, I'm picking my battles here. I mean, yeah, if you wanna give me a new road, that'd be lovely. I'm hoping to just be able to get emergency vehicles in and out, and they can travel on this road currently.
Okay, Mr. Two?
Can they travel at all times of the year or just certain times?
Mr. Dolan?
So the, the road is not, uh, maintained by the borough, um, which means it's not maintained, essentially. Um, DNR doesn't do very much maintenance work at all. Residents who live back there do their own maintenance in general. Is it traversable most of the year? Yes, if you have the right kind of equipment. But, uh, you know, a, a small sedan isn't gonna make it back there in the wintertime, and, uh, there's, um, uh, soft spots and muddy issues, uh, in the springtime near breakup, uh, as there is on most substandard roads.
On the amendment, any objection to the amendment? It's to add the bridge at Lynx Lake and Yoder. See, no objection to the amendment, passes. Any further discussion on Resolution 21115? Mr. Two? Mr. Two?
Yeah, I have, I have an amendment. I move to amend Resolution number 21-115, and I am number 21-220 Roads Rail to Port Project, Section 5, Port McKenzie Natural Gas Line from $25 million by striking the project estimate of $25 million and inserting $14 million in its place throughout the legislation. Uh, the base of this estimate is a smaller pipeline to the port with the intent of only providing heating loads to the businesses that might choose to operate in the area. This would not provide significant, uh, sufficient supply, this would supply sufficient, uh, supply of local business heating loads.
And this is supported by staff?
Yes.
Okay, everybody understand amendment? Gonna reduce it substantially? Any objection to Mr. Two's amendment? Mr. McKee?
I don't object to the amendment, but I, I, I bring up another question. Everybody on this Assembly, yes, and, but the public has not received it yet, is a study that was done for Point McKenzie. We paid $26,000 for it. We just got it, okay? It is by a professional, a, actual port group, and they drove a stake right through the heart of Point McKenzie, okay? When you read that, hey, they better tell the Air Force to arm, arm the bombs and do my first suggestion five years ago, okay? That thing is deader than a... That thing is deader than a doorknob. So we ought to just keep the... Take any of that money that you're putting out and taking it off. I'll vote for anything that's going to reduce the money to that turkey, okay? But Point McKenzie is dead, folks. Read the report. They say it's dead. If we don't... I sat down and I actually conferred with one of the professionals on the borough staff as to what it would take. The big thing they said was, we don't have a port, we don't even have a dock because we don't have any equipment. A lift to take a van off a barge and put it on the dock costs $7 million. Is the borough taxpayers willing to put $7 million on the line when there are no customers for the port?
Are you for or against Mr. Two's amendment?
I will vote for his... You won't let me abstain my last night?
No, you don't get to abstain. Definitely, definitely don't. But we're talking about his amendment now.
Okay, I'll vote for his amendment, but reluctantly.
Okay. Discuss this or Ms. Nowers, then we're going to vote on it.
It's so hard to follow that act. I just would speak in support of this amendment and just note that Port McKenzie, yes, there's the port operation out there, but there's a lot more that could happen out there with that land. That's a big piece of land. So having gas out there and the things that could be possible with gas is something that has value, whether or not the port develops.
Okay. On Mr. Two's amendment, any objection to passing Mr. Two's amendment? See, no objection. Mr. Two's amendment passes. Okay, Ms. Nowers apparently has an amendment also for...
Thank you, I actually have three. And the first is actually one I didn't give to you, so I want to apologize for that. But, you know, looking at this list of projects we have, we've got some things that could really benefit the borough long-term.
Let's do the... State your amendments.
Okay, sir. My amendment is to change the amount of the safe routes to schools from $2.5 million to $5 million. I'd like to speak to it. When I look at this list and I think what people would look back in five years and say, I really noticed a difference. Some of these things could have big, long-term impacts if we get the port going, keeping Talkeetna from eroding. But when I think about, you know, what sort of concrete thing are people going to feel? Their kids being able to walk to school, having a light for safe traffic. That's a small budget item because some of the things on here are like $140 million. So I think $2.5 million is not going to go very far. We already know two or three schools that could benefit from having like the career, you know, tech situation over there with the lighting over there, Pioneer Peak, and there's probably more to come. So I think we probably could go up from that, but just to be conservative, I'd like to change that to $5 million. And then if staff gets back to us later and says, you know, there's more that we could do, we could always come back in amendment. So I'd like to ask for your support for changing that from $2.5 to $5 million.
Okay. Everybody got the amendment? Any objection to Ms. Nowers's amendment? Going from $2.5 million to $5 million for schools? See, no objection. That amendment passes. Next?
Okay, this one you do have in front of you. This is an amendment to add $2.3 million for drinking, under-drinking water and wastewater for the Bogart Water Booster Station. You have a write-up on this, but basically there were lines that were put in to Colony High and Middle School over there that are for water but cannot be used because they need a booster station. And so this is something that's been on the city's list for a long time, but it benefits the borough as a whole because it helps expand that water network out. And if we want to grow the core area of the valley and not have the sprawl go everywhere and provide affordable housing, extending the water and the sewer system is one way to do this. So this is an already existing project that has a lot of research on it.
Okay, Mr. Hale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say that I support this. I was on the dirt crew that installed that 18-inch water main along Bogart, and I had no idea that they never turned it on. So let's go ahead and get it turned on.
Mr. Sumner?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to ask, so the booster station, how far will that allow us to, just the extent of the existing pipeline? Or would that allow us to extend that even further? I guess is the question.
Ms. Nowers?
I don't know if I have an exact answer on that. I might need a lifeline if Mayor DeBries knows the answer, but I think it does allow for expansion beyond that. Not 100% sure on that, but I think it does. Yeah, okay, I'm getting a nod over there.
Mr. Yott?
Is that something Mr. Dolan could clarify on? No, getting that negative? Is that a no, it couldn't be expanded, or no, you don't want to speak to it? Sorry.
It's a city of Palmer's water system.
Right, but...
Where's the city of Palmer when you need him? You guys, yeah, you sit in power over there. Where's Mr. Moosey? Let's wake him up. Oh, yeah.
So through the mayor to Mr. Yott, you hit it on the nose. It's a city of Palmer-owned and operated systems, so I don't have any data on it. We can certainly find out for you. I know the Public Works Director over there, and I could ask him the question and get you an email on it.
Okay. Mr. Sumner?
I ask, Mr. Mayor, because I might have a conflict of interest because I have property just beyond that, so...
I don't know. I don't think that's much of a conflict. Do you? You're okay. No conflict. Okay, on Ms. Nowers's amendment, $2.3 million for Bogart Water Booster Station, any objection? Mr. McKee?
I don't object to this. It's a worthwhile amendment, but we're... It's again, we've got something before us and we really don't have engineering answers for the question. Do we go wake up John Moosey or what have you to get an answer for this? I mean, this was an answer that should have been available to us tonight when we're going to vote for.
Okay, the resolution is a resolution approving a list of potential federally-funded infrastructure projects. So it's kind of a preliminary-type identification, so...
So then we can change it every other week?
Probably could.
Okay, okay. That's good. I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Your wife could change it.
Leave me. The velvet devil will.
There's another T-shirt quote, I tell you. Okay. I'm sorry, I got carried away. On Ms. Nowers's amendment, the $2.3 million Bogart Road Booster Station, any objection? It's just going to go on the potential list. See, no objection. That amendment passes. Next?
All right. Last amendment is to add $1 million for the inner-outter Springer Loop Pathway Project. And this was something that was on the road bond package, but we took it off in the interest of lowering the cost, the overall cost of the road bond project. But this is a very valuable project that would connect the pathways that exist now along the Glen Highway to one in Palmer. So it provides a pathway for the many folks who use the area, including those who come to the Alaska State Fairgrounds.
Okay. Everybody understand the amendment? The pathway project back on, not on the road bond package, but in this resolution. Any objection? See, none, that amendment passes too. Anything further on 21115 that's been amended six times? Five times? Any objection to passing Resolution 21115 as amended?
Pardon? I do have one quick comment.
Comment?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a project in here at the landfill, Channelute Circle, and it creates a road that goes to what the borough has looked at for secondary access over to Trunk Road, but there are issues with that access. So I don't have any problem with putting it forward because this is a wish list, but as we move forward with this project, I would like that project to be looked at in terms of scope and making sure we don't end up with a dead-end road that we can't then connect. And then I just one other comment, sort of to Mr. McKee's point. I would really appreciate, as we move forward, that we get updates from the manager, you know, maybe on a monthly basis or as needed in terms of where we're at with these projects and where the funding is at, because I could see some prioritization of this as we go forward. We're kind of in a unknown as far as how the funding is going to come down exactly and how we ask for it. So those are just two comments, but I would ask that we get sort of monthly or sooner, if needed, projects. I mean, updates, excuse me.
Okay. With that, is there any objection to passing 21115 as amended? See, none, 21115 as amended passes. Okay, now we're going to go to audience participation. Now, Honky Lee, you'd be first up.
Let me start my clock so that I don't go over the time. Start right now. Good evening, everybody. Great to see you and nice to meet you. And my name is Honky Lee, and I'm running for United States Senate as an independent Alaskan. And I agree with everything Integroly said. The roads in the city, we have enough roads. What we need in the city, we need more trees. But way out there, where there are no roads, like in the mountain, we need more roads so that we can go hiking, camping, hunting, right? 100% agree with you. So the... My little bit of my background, because I'm US Senate candidate for next year. I'm a lawyer. I used to be a computer programmer. And before that, I was in the US Army. My job was electrician for helicopters. So as a computer science major, yeah, I have some science background. So right now, I'm personal injury lawyer, like ambulance chaser, basically, okay? In Wasilla, okay? And I live in Clinic Fairview, just outside of Wasilla. And so that's background about me. And I came to Alaska like six years ago. I'm kind of new. Why did I come? I wanted to be part of this Alaskan adventure. When I first came six years ago to Alaska from Annaboo, Michigan, I didn't even have a job for three months. I was unemployed. But I got involved with local politics because when I was living in Wasilla, CTO Wasilla instituted this plastic bag ban, and I love plastic bags. So I protested in the city meetings. That's how I got involved with local politics, okay? So that was my politics about, I'm independent, so sometimes I agree with Democrats, sometimes I agree with Republicans, depending on the issues. So I'm independent, okay? So the way I see Democrats, they're Americans, okay? Sometimes I disagree with them, but we love them, we tolerate them. Two-party system in America, I think that's great checks and balances. I think it's working very well. And so what's my politics? My politics is about environmentally sound development of Alaskan resources, okay? We have gold and copper in Pebble Mine, I'm all for that. We have oil and gas in Anwar, I'm all for that too. What I advocate for is environmentally sound resource development. Then let's get those products done environmentally soundly, and we protect the environment and we make money, we create jobs. We will make so much money. Now we have leftover money. Now we can help the poor. So that way, we can satisfy Democrats and Republicans all together. As an independent, that's what I would do as a senator. Bring the left and right, let's start working together, keep the PFD, make a lot of money, create jobs. Thank you. Good night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Let's see. Cheryl Newsom?
Took us a while...
Rather boring compared to Mr. Lee.
Yeah. Took us a while to get to you, didn't it? Took us a while to get to you.
Yeah, but I stayed awake because I was... Mr. McKee, I agree with this fellow over here. I'm always the one that raises the issues about money at the board meetings. Good evening, I'm Cheryl Newsom, the pastor of Christ Center Community Church on Upper Caswell Lake. I've resided in Caswell for over 15 years and from the time of firefighting fires with the Bucket Brigade to the time of having a beautiful, highly-functional fire department with a wonderful bunch of firefighters. For the past 11, 12 years, I have served on the Board of Supervisors for the Caswell Fire Service Area. As representative of that board, I come before you tonight, and I come before you to thank Vern Halter. He and I go back a long ways with the fire department. Vern, this letter is to express the sincere appreciation of the Caswell Fire Service Area Board of Supervisors for the legacy you've left behind in your roles over the past 12 years with that fire department. First is the Assembly Member of District 7, and then is the Mayor of the Matsus who sit in the borough. We are the sum total of those who have touched our lives. Your touch has blessed the residents of the Caswell community in a mighty way through the hard work and support you have provided, provided from the time we were a fire department, we had a dream of a fire department in our community, until it became a reality with a beautiful and highly-functional fire station and well-trained firefighters. Not only were you committed to making our dream a reality, you supported us when we recommended a raise for our firefighters. That raise was approved by the Assembly for the firefighters borough-wide. You also support our fire station by way of road improvements, roadside consistency, and ensuring Upper Caswell Lake had an adequate water supply to be used by the fire station as a water source if necessary by way of a new culvert system. You also cut down on feuding in the community by way of that. This list is not meant to be all-inclusive, but further illustrates the hard work and support you have provided. Vern, the years you have committed to public service have been fruitful years. Thank you for your commitment to emergency services and the members of the Caswell community.
Thank you, Ms. Newsom. I appreciate that, you know. And speaking of your fire hall up there, you know, I think we do want to thank then-Senator Dunleavy and his Chief of Staff, John Wood, who really came through to fund that for us. And so, thank you, but I appreciate it. Okay. Ken Eggleston?
Welcome. My name is Ken Eggleston, and I've been up in Caswell about 12 years. I was with Cheryl at the first meeting we had because we couldn't get a fire service area up in our area. We had to have the willow come about four miles down the road and Talkeetna come about four miles up the road, and they would stop unless there was a person, safety, life, our stuff would burn. And that's where we talked about the Bucket Brigades. This Assembly, about 12 years ago, listened to us and said, we told them, we can't get a vote because 80% of our people up there are weekenders, and they won't vote for anything that causes any raise in taxes. So the Assembly allowed the, only the residents to vote on a fire service area. And Mayor Halter was one of those people that helped us get this going. Also, I'm here tonight to thank Tam Bovee for being our representative. This letter is to express the sincere appreciation of the Caswell Fire Service Area. I happen to be the Chairman of the Fire Service Area up there, and I've been with the board 11 years and seen quite a bit of growth. And our community is much better and much safer for it. Because as some of you may or may not know, and I think most of you do, we have five gated communities in that area now, and there are proposals for more. And it's growing. And the people that talked tonight about having a road through there, we understand what that's like because most of us have moved up there for a reason. We have one road in, one road out. And with the McKinley Fire and the Sauk Eye Fire, as the borough managers made the statement, there are a lot of egress problems in our communities. But we're not... But we're not here to talk about that. We're here to talk about Tam's support and hard work. We're especially noteworthy with respect to helping those who lost their residents during the fire. During the McKinley Fire, which began on August 17, 2019, your support and hard work also included getting the significant damage to Hidden Hills Road near the Parks Highway. Dugout repaved, thereby making it only re-egress that we can have, the issue of not having our equipment, heavy equipment, get through. Caswell Fire Service Area Board of Supervisors, you have been to almost every one of them and we appreciate that. I will tell you tonight that we are deeply grateful for your support and your act will be hard followed. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you. Steve Charles.
Mayor Halter, Assembly, staff. I would also like to talk and thank Tam Bovee and Vern Halter for their extraordinary representation of District Seven in the borough the last decades for Vern, three short, two short years for Tam. They approached their jobs, I guess you could say, in different styles, in different ways. And Tam went to just about every meeting she could find, whether it's a community council meeting, road service board meetings, fire service board meetings, or any kind of a meeting in any community in our six district community councils. She found the time to go to those meetings. And and she not only saw the meetings, but she she learned the issues. She knew the people in each of the communities personally, and this goes with Vern, too. Vern was the same way. And they knew and they expressed without regard, without judgment, without pretense, heard those issues with anybody and brought those issues to the borough. And she and Vern knew the borough, knew the staff, knew where to go to and knew how to get a response from the borough and address those concerns. As they say, they all have their different issues. Tam was a quiet listener, making personal relationships. Vern, we know Vern, you know, when he's in the room and he, you know, he likes to have communicating with everybody.
I'm going to cut you off.
So but whatever style they were, it worked. And I just feel like Willow had three golden years. And it shows by ribbon cutting of our much-needed new library and our upgrade of our community center. So Mayor Vern, Tam Bovee, thank you very much. And I speak from my wife, Marion, and I'm many people in Willow. So thank you.
We appreciate it, Steve. This guy is Mr. Trails up in Willow. He's been doing the trail work up there for, I don't know, generations. So I want to thank you first of all. So, okay, let's see. That's all we have in the signup list on audience participation. Anybody else wish to speak? Come on forward, sir. This is my neighbor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Tam Bovee, just wanted to say thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership. Had a brief moment to try to give some leadership to Willow and found your support and encouragement very helpful and have been glad to let you take over since I left, but have appreciated your, as has already been expressed, your even-handed leadership for us as a as a whole community. Appreciate that so very much and I wanted to come here and say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Here he teaches at Matsu College along with my my wife, Susan, too. So I appreciate that. And anyone, anyone else want to speak? Okay, we'll close audience participation at this point in time? Yes, telephoning. Okay, excuse me. We have telephone callers. So go ahead, please. First caller.
Hi, there are two of us here. My name is Ruth Wood. I'm calling from Talkeetna. And I'm calling in tonight because I want to say thank you both to Mayor Halter and to Assembly Representative Bovee. We here in the upper valley greatly appreciate the attention both of you have given to our community. We've worked longer with Vern, but no one has worked harder than Tam. Talkeetna is an important community, not only for those of us who live here, but also for the economic benefits we bring to the borough. We will continue to work with the next mayor and assembly to keep the qualities that make this town so special. But tonight, we heartily thank Vern and Tam for always taking our calls, coming to our meetings, giving our views careful consideration, working with us to find solutions, and so much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller? One more caller, please. Same caller.
My name is Kelly Dixon, D I C K S O N. And I'm speaking to the Burma Road Muscher Peter Pipe. I never thought of history as a fragile thing. People have kept written records for centuries. I also thought people would respect the documented feats and accomplishments of Alaska's early indigenous people, European explorers, Russian fur traders, and finally, the men of the Alaska Road Commission. I was wrong. Alaska's history is under attack by private interest groups who have made their way into state and local government like cancer. Their aim is to hurt private property owners by making false claims about trail locations to gain easements. This behavior will destroy Alaska. The Alaska Road Commission journals document the location, creation, and maintenance of Alaska's early road infrastructure. I will be sharing facts from the Alaska Road Commission journals and other primary sources which support the Iditarod Trail location well north of your current pipe location. In 1905, the Alaska Road Commission was created and the Valde East of Fairbanks Route was the primary focus for development in order to facilitate access to interior areas of Alaska. This trail was used for express transportation, mail, and passengers bound for the Tiana and Yukon area during winter. The communities located at Slate Creek and the Copper River depended on this route as their only communication connection year-round. Cattle were driven from Valde East of Fairbanks along this route in summer. The Valde East Route would connect to the Tana and Yukon Rivers, which were frozen highways in winter and liquid water routes in summer. Location of trails in Alaska began with adopting existing native Alaskan trails as preliminary routes with the intent to improve them and use the access provided to aid future trail locations. It took considerable money and time to determine the location of a pack trail with the narrow width of eight feet. Horse-drawn sled trails were cleared at a 16-foot width. Inability to control growth of the underbrush frequently dictated trail locations in Alaska. Swamps, meadows, ridge crests, and stream beds were preferred locations due to the lack of brush to clear and maintain for future use. You have misled the public about the true location of the Iditarod Trail, and I will be providing more information from the Alaska Road Commission, the men who created and mapped Alaska's early infrastructure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One more caller, please.
Hi, my name is John Strassenberg. I am calling from Talkeetna. And I also want to express my great appreciation to both Tam and Vern for their dedicated service over the years. Tam, I just say thank you, thank you, thank you. You have done an absolutely fantastic job representing District Seven over the last three years. And I think the secret to your success, or one of the secrets, is that you listened and you understood and you worked with the community to solve the issues that were important to the community. And I've never seen an assembly person work harder or attend more meetings. And our communities are much the better for us, for it. And you've made you've made a real difference and I thank you again. Now Vern, I recall now tonight that you have actually represented our community for 15 years up here at the Planning Commission as Assemblyperson for two terms, representing District Seven, and two terms of mayor. It's kind of, I'm kind of thinking it's going to be hard not to be able to call you and complain anymore, but I'll have to get used to that. But you've contributed a heck of a lot to making this borough a better place for all of us and you did it in a in a very thoughtful way. So anyway, thank you again and and we'll see you around. That's it.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Any more telephonics? Anyone else in the audience? Going once? Going twice? We will close out audience participation at this time. We'll go to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk. I guess we pulled two items, correct?
Yes, we did, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 21117, excuse me, a resolution establishing date certain for payment delinquency, protest, and appeal for the 2022 regular assessment and tax rolls and business inventory filing and for the commencement of hearings before the Board of Equalization. Resolution 21120, a resolution reinstating free disposal of limited amounts of residential hazardous weights at the central landfill for motor oil, latex paint, vehicle batteries, antipres, and cooking oil. Resolution 21121, a resolution admitting the budget for the Clap Mack Road Extension Wasilla Sports Center to connect Goose Bay Road. Wasilla Improvements Project and the Felton Street Extension Project. Resolution 11127, a resolution authorizing participation in and submission of an application under the federal fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program for the grant funds in an amount not to exceed $850 for the Matsu Senior Services Housing Rehabilitation Project. AM 21108, authorization to purchase from the government computer sales in the amount of $182,829 fiscal year 2022 computer replacements under the National Association of State Procurement Officials Agreement. AM 21109, approval of contract amendment to contract number 2118P with CRW Engineering Group LLC to extend the completion date for the septic treatment and disposal facility feasibility study to September 30, 2022. AM 21110, awarded bid number 22052B to Northern Asphalt Construction Incorporated in the contract amount of $447,445.50 for West Comerant Way Road Improvements. AM 1112111, excuse me, approval of contract extension for bid number 21143B with Mechanical Specialists Incorporated for the final completion date of December 31, 2021 for the Public Safety Building 65 heating, ventilation, and air conditioning upgrades project. AM 21112, approval of contract extension for bid number 2105015B with Roger Hickel Contracting Incorporated for a final completion date of June 30, 2022 for the Willow Library Construction and Community Center upgrades. AM 21113, approval of contract extension for bid 21105B with Steppers Construction Company for a final completion date of August 1, 2022 and a substantial completion date of June 30, 2022 for the Julie Marie and Morgan Circle Improvement Projects. AM 21114, approval of contract extension for bid 21123B with Western Construction and Equipment LLC for a final completion date of August 15, 2022 and a substantial completion date of July 1, 2022 for the Michigan Street and Lake Shore Circle Improvement Project. AM 21115, approval of contract extension for bid 21109B with Granite Construction Corp. Company for a final completion date of September 30, 2022 and a substantial completion date of August 15, 2022 for the Sunset Drive Improvements Project. AM 21116, awarded proposal number 22039BP to Architects Alaska Incorporated in the contract amount of $542,593.58 to design the new Palmer Emergency Services Facility. AM 21117, awarded proposal 22046P to Raspac Company LLC in the contract amount of $148,877 to design central landfill road access improvements.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Assemblywoman Bovee, could you move that consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agendas read into the record by the clerk.
Any objection? Here to see no objection, the consent agenda is approved and I guess we'll take the items one at a time.
Resolution 21128, a resolution directing the Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission to become more involved regarding issue of wildlife and provide quarterly reports to the Assembly in 2022. This was pulled by Assemblymember McKee.
Okay, Assemblymember McKee, could you?
I move to adopt the resolution as read by the clerk.
You want to discuss it?
Yeah, I do. I've been six years on the borough. I have never heard a report by that commission on wildlife. In fact, I've never heard a report by that commission on anything but salmon, except for one time, and that was a pike where eating the salmon. Okay, that's the only time. Beyond that, in the six years, we have only heard about salmon. So that made me go back and do research, the history of this. Originally, this group started out as a sportsman's advisor to the mayor way, way back. Okay? And then it was converted over a five-member group. I'm sorry, a seven-member group. Now, it's interesting, the Assembly, when they drafted and passed that ordinance, meant for the that commission to deal with wildlife. Or otherwise, they would not have directed that one of the Assemblypeople would, I mean, one of the people appointed to the board would be on fisheries and one would be for hunting. Okay, this was in the ordinance. Okay, so it's never happened up to that point in time. Now, are there issues out here that would warrant this this group looking at? Well, day before yesterday, the mayor, I'm sorry, the governor advanced the possibility of transplanting black-tailed deer to the Matsu Borough. Okay, that's something maybe a commission might like to look at. Okay, in fact, they didn't have a clue it was going to happen. Okay. So the idea, now look, I'm finished with the Assembly. There's a thing called truth in advertising, okay? If this is going to be the Salmon Commission and Salmon Commission only, let's say it, change the title to the Salmon Commission. Leave out wildlife because it has been left out up to this point. So my my idea was that there are, in particular, there have been discussions here about where the borough is going to go relative to Anchorage. We would like the Anchorage people to come out here and spend their money into borough. Okay? And the only way they're going to do that is for recreation. And salmon fishing is getting real, real low. Okay? That's one thing. The other that troubled me about this commission, now the Finance Director can correct me on this, but a week ago, I got the figure from her, as of the start of the budget year, this commission, a volunteer commission, had a budget of $97,000. They have spent $49,000. I'll bet there's not a single person setting up on this gears that knows what they spent $49,000 on. Okay? So the idea is that, what it really has turned out to be is a lobbying group, a totally unstructured lobbying group that meets for five days, generally speaking, with the State Salmon Commission. And five years ago, I don't know what they spent last year, five years ago, that commission, that seven-group commission spent $30,000 in the Sheraton Hotel.
So, okay.
Okay, Mayor, no, it's important. The commission is either a, unless people, the Assembly is going to direct what they want that commission to do, then it really ought to be abolished and it ought to start all over again.
So your your resolution is to add more wildlife issues to the same board?
Yeah, just to get it off the ground.
Okay. Let's see who we got. Tim Hale, then Tam Bovee, then anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to, I don't necessarily
I just would like to, I don't necessarily oppose this or anything, but I don't necessarily, I don't think that it's necessary. Um, uh, being on the Fish and Wildlife Commission for the last year and hopefully being on it for the next year, um, I, I will tell you that we have a subcommittee that specifically deals with wildlife issues, and, um, that subcommittee brings forward wildlife issues at pretty much every meeting that I've been to. Uh, most recently, we were talking about, uh, we had a gentleman from up, um, Lake Louise who was talking about, uh, the caribou hunt up there and how federal and state regulations were, uh, uh, subsistence and personal use regulations were impacting the, um, the regular, uh, tag users. Uh, we've also discussed the antlerless moose hunt that happens here in the, in the valley every year and how that's affecting, um, how that's affecting moose populations and, and, um, and legal moose takes. Uh, I think the reason that the Fish and Wildlife Commission spends so much more time on fish issues than on wildlife issues is that on wildlife issues, we do not have a well-funded and well-organized, uh, opposition to our use of those resources like we do with fish issues. The Cook Inlet, um, the Cook Inlet Commercial Fishery is dead set against the matineuse to sit in the borough getting any more fish in our rivers, and that is why we spend more time on fish than we do on wildlife. I don't see the reporting requirements as being a, a problem. Uh, I'm sure that the staff would be more than happy to come here, uh, four times a year and tell us about the stuff we've worked on with wildlife issues, but it's not, we are not by any means ignoring wildlife issues.
Ms. Bovee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna agree with what Assemblymember Hale said. Um, I'm also, was a former member of the Fish Commission until, um, two weeks ago. Um, and then there definitely has been discussion on issues beside fish, and, and those conversations are reflected in the monthly minutes. So I feel like as long as we're getting this report from them, and, and they are very detailed reports, um, I, I feel like it's redundant to require staff to report quarterly. Additionally, uh, the schedule suggested for reporting, um, was June and September, I believe, and the commission actually does not meet June, July, and August. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Look, uh, I appreciate, uh, what Mr. Hale said, but that, there were no report to the Assembly on this. Interestingly enough, I went down five days ago and talked to the guy who does the moose surveys in Unit fourteen A. Okay? And it's interesting, he says there are five thousand moose here. Okay? And they have come up with a different theory than, and it would be nice to have it before the Assembly. They simply say we're educating the moose, that we kill off the stupid ones and the smart ones are moving back like the deer do, and so that in the wintertime, when they do their surveys, like on the Connect River, uh, up there last winter, in just one group, they had three bulls over sixty inches and eighty head of moose in one bunch. Okay? That, that's information that should be looked at, I think, by a lot of different people. But, but as I say, I have no objection to, uh, I wouldn't have if I were on the Assembly, if you simply abolished it and called it the Salmon Commission, because we're not gonna change the salmon allocation up here. I don't care if we send hot and cold, grilling people down there. Okay?
Nowers?
Thank you. Um, just a question for Mr. McKee. When was the last time you attended a meeting, or have you brought any of these concerns forward to the committee?
Uh, I, I didn't, but I explained in the beginning here, uh, I, I looked at that and said, wait a minute, in six years, I've never seen a report. If somebody spends a hundred thousand dollars a year, you ought to have a report. You ought to have a lot of reports, quite frankly, from a volunteer group. Okay? We had zero. You've been here, what? How many have you had since you've been on the Assembly that had with wildlife?
I've been to several of their meetings.
I didn't ask you that. I said, how many of you, when you're sitting on the Assembly, have you heard a report?
Let's not argue back and forth.
I'm attempting to respond just to
Nasty.
What you are requesting, in my experience with the Fish and Wildlife Board and sitting in on those meetings, they haven't ignored wildlife issues. I've not seen a large number of people clamoring at those meetings for wildlife issues to be addressed and seeing them ignore it. And none of what you provided to us, all this budget information that you're providing now, is not in your documentation before. So I know sort of generally that they spent a lot of money to do some of what Mr. Hale directed, but I think it's incumbent on us to, um, spend the time to listen in on the meetings and take it to them, um, before we start to, what I see as micromanaging a commission that is one of the most effective, most knowledgeable, and most successful in helping an industry in the valley can bring dollars here.
Okay, Mr. Hale, then.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to address the point that, um, we're not going to affect the, the allocation of fish, um, because, in fact, uh, I think it was two years ago at the, uh, at the, the Board of Fish Meeting, we did just that, um, and it was allocated in our favor. Um, so, uh, the Board is doing its job, um, and we do consider wildlife issues, but we are, in fact, affecting the allocation of fish in the borough's favor.
Okay. On Resolution twenty-one, twenty-one-one-twenty-eight, is there objection to passing this resolution? Okay, there is objection, so go ahead and vote either for or against. If you vote for, it's, I don't see any problems with it. If you vote against, I don't see any problems with it either.
Mr. Mayor, it passed with Assemblymember Hale, Nowers, and Bovee opposed.
Okay. Now, do we have one more?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Let me get this vote down real quick. We have AM twenty-one-one-oh-five, awarded bid number twenty-two-zero-four-zero-B to Valley General Construction LLC in the contract amount of six hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars for Muskrat Street, Fox Avenue, Mink Street, Muscock Street, and Martin Avenue Road Improvements. This was pulled by Assemblymember Two.
Okay, Mr. Two, could you move that and then go ahead and discuss it?
Okay. Uh, so I move AM twenty-one dash one-oh-five. And, uh, you want me to discuss it? So what that is, is a project that was in the Big Lake area. It was put out for, because the subdivision was flooding, and, uh, I reviewed the bid documents, and the bid documents were to reconstruct the roads, is to put new gravel on top of good gravel, and it didn't, it didn't, uh, address the flooding issue. So, uh, I pulled it, talked to the RSA Board, we're going to take that money and put it into a new project which addresses the flooding. And, uh, the RSA Board's aboard, uh, their, their approval of it.
Yep. Did I get it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Nowers?
So I wanted to speak to this, um, because of the process by which this took place and, um, that this bid was actually awarded, and then, um, Assemblymember Two raised questions about it, and so, um, that's why it's, it's back before us. So this was a project, process-wise, that had been on the RIP list, as I understand it, for several years, had gone all the way through and had been awarded to a contractor, and then we have, uh, Assemblymembers step in. And so, process-wise, um, you know, I think this doesn't look or feel right. There may be a legitimate concern there, but in terms of the message it sends to contractors who count on the, I mean, a lot of vetting went on on this project before it, it came to this point. So, uh, seeing who got a project and then objecting to it doesn't look or feel right, and I think it sends the wrong messages to contractors. So I think this should move forward, and that if we have objections, we need to, we need to get there before we award a bid.
Mr. Sumner?
Through the mayor, technically, what we're doing right now would be awarding the bid. The, the, the contract has not been awarded. This would be the awarded bid. Um, although I, I also do think it is a bit inappropriate to, to halt things because of the project at this stage, but it, it hasn't already been awarded.
Ms. Bovee? It's, it's, it may be inappropriate, but it's not as dumb as doing the work and not taking care of the flooding. Uh, I, I mean, that's the real problem, and, and, and I have some experience with this on our own subdivision, and I took the borough, Assistant Borough Manager out there to look at it. They, they, where you have flooding, you have to take care of the flooding, or you'll fix a road every year. Okay? So I, I, I think that, in fact, uh, Mr. Two is exactly correct in doing what he's doing, and I think that, uh, uh, Mr. Sumner is right, that has not been awarded. Right now, this would be the award, so we, we can, if we want to, not award it.
Ms. Bovee?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with Assemblymember Nowers. I, I'm just a little concerned about the process here. I mean, this sat on a RIP list for years. There was plenty of time to look at this and decide that this wasn't the course of action. Um, it had been, you know, through a number of public meetings, uh, the Road Board approved it, um, and a, at this point, I think to start pulling these when we're going to be awarding bids is gonna discourage contractors from investing the, the time and money in, in placing these bids. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Yott?
I appreciate the concerns on, on both sides of this, I really do. Um, being a contractor myself, it, you know, you put a lot of time into bidding things. With that being said, I don't think even the contractor would wanna perform a project and then have to look back in three or five or eight years and, and run a new issue. So I have a question through the mayor, to the manager. Could we possibly continue with this and add in an all additive alternative? Um, is this something that we could negotiate between? Instead, we have a, a contractor that worked hard to get this bid, was the lowest bidder. Is this something that we could kill two birds with one stone?
Uh, through the mayor to Mr. Yott, not to address the drainage issues that Mr. Two, uh, described, uh, what he's suggesting, and I don't mean to speak, uh, for you, but it's a larger, uh, drainage project that considers a, a much larger area, that takes it from the beginning of the basin all the way until it drains into Big Lake. This project's scope would not do that, and I think it's, it's too wildly different to, to create it as a change order.
I see.
And there would be obviously design considerations. The other, uh, portion of that drainage project, or what needs to be considered if, if we're to take on that scope, is, uh, it crosses both Hollywood Drive and Big, Big Lake Road. So you've got DOT considerations and permits and things that would be required to address, you know, culverts and drainage associated with those two roadways. So it's much more extensive than, than what you would change order into a project like this.
Yep, and it's not in my district, and, and so I don't know the road inside and out, and I just thought I would ask, so, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Two, then Mr. Hale?
Okay, so what the problem is, it's called Jolly Creek Floodplain, and it starts up on Cherrywood, which is up on Big Lake Road, and it, and it goes down, and it, I don't know how many miles it is, but let's just say it's two miles or something. But anyways, it starts on Cherrywood, and it comes down, and then it floods out Clotina, and then it goes across Hotty, Hollywood, then it floods out all those neighbors and their houses, and then it goes across Big Lake Road, and then it, then the flooding starts over there on the animal streets. Yes, this project has been on the RIP list for two hundred and eighty years, and it's all about the flooding, but it's, but, but the, this project did not, who knew when the bid went out and the, the plans come back and it wouldn't be on flooding? That's what it was supposed to go out for, is the flooding. It came back as a road upgrade that personally, I did maintenance on that road. It's a wonderful road. To put more gravel on there is just throwing money away. So the Road Board agrees with this, uh, that's the RSA people in the neighborhood. I agree on it as the Assemblymember in the neighborhood. I gave you the, the legitimate reasons. I, uh, I just expect support.
So the, the, you're proposing no roadwork, just water work, what?
Flooding, flooding. Yeah, it's drainage, drating.
On and off private property, or on, on public property, or where?
It has to go through all those properties, Vern. I can't tell you exactly who would be impacted.
What's the cost?
We, oh, the Borough Manager might have that.
Through the mayor. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I think one of our, uh, civil folks did estimate something around six hundred thousand. I'm kinda looking to our Public Works Director and see if he recalls. Was it? No? Okay, so I retract that. Um, I don't have a good cost estimate for that. That's part of, part of the funding for this, if you, if it's, if the Assembly were to vote it down, would then be available in the capital budget for RSA twenty-one to then pursue the scope that Mr. Two already alluded to. Two clarifying points, first of all, if I may. Uh, the, the first is, the existing project that's before you does address drainage for those specific roads. It does not address the drainage in the other portions of the basin that Mr. Two described. So it does look at culvert upsizing and whatnot for the roads that are listed in this con, in this contract. Second point is, there, there have been studies of this basin. There's a, the Borough Sanctioned Hydrology Report back in two thousand seven, I believe, that studied that area. So there's been acknowledgement for years that there are drainage and flooding issues in that area. So the borough has looked at that in the past, um, and there's already been a report that talks about some of those issues regarding the hydrology of that specific area.
Let's see, Tim Hale?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor to the manager, um, so is this project, um, this design, you say, that has, it already has addressed some of the drainage issues, is this part of a phased approach for addressing the entire drainage issues, or, um, is it part of a larger design, I guess, is what I'm trying to ask, um, as far as addressing all of the drainage issues in this area?
Yeah, I see Mr. Dolan coming forward. I suspect he has a little bit more history on some of those projects than I do, so I'll defer to him to see if he's got more additional information.
Terry Dolan, Director of Public Works. This project was professionally designed to deal with the flooding in the streets that are listed here. We call them the animal streets. Um, as, uh, Mr. Two alluded to and the manager said, it doesn't address flooding across the whole basin of Jolly Creek, but only in this area that's, uh, near the end of, uh, as the water travels, uh, into larger creeks in the lake. So essentially, this covers a small area at the, at the very end, which is kinda where you wanna start, where the water's gonna go, and then move your way back. So if you wanna think of it as a phase, you can. Uh, it is a good start, uh, to correcting flooding issues, but it doesn't address, uh, the flooding further back up in the creek.
Let's see, Ms. Nowers?
Just wanna say, even though the, this project is in this district, not in my district, there are contractors all over the borough, so this kinda process issue affects us all over the borough. And again, all of this would have been fine if it had come up before it got awarded. It had been on the IRP list, heavily engineered, and then gone all the way. And, uh, Mr. Sumner is correct, but a low bid had been, um, we knew who was headed toward getting the bid. So, um, again, it's just where in the process it came up and, and how that feels and looks to folks.
Mr. Sumner? Call the question. Okay. Any objection to calling the question?
Nope.
Okay, so no objection to calling the question?
So if we say yes, we're turning it down, if we say no, okay. Not calling your question, so no, there's not.
We're stopping debate, and we're gonna vote on AM twenty-one-one-oh-five. If you vote yes, Madam Clerk, what happens?
If you vote yes, it passes. If you vote no, it does not.
Yes is awards the bid, no does not. Okay, go ahead and vote.
Mr. Mayor, it failed with Assemblymember Nowers and Bovee in support.
Okay. Any more consent agenda, no more consent agenda items, so we're done with that, let's move on. Okay, unfinished business. Please read the unfinished business, Madam Clerk. Do we wanna take a minute? Let's take one minute for bathroom break. Let's take one minute for bathroom break. Let's go back on the record. It's about 8:58 PM. We took a little recess. We're back at unfinished business. Madam Clerk, please read the unfinished business into the record.
Ordinance 21040 and ordinance amending MSB 2.08060A, compensation for the mayor.
Okay, the main motion's on the floor. Let's take up discussion on the main motion. Yes, sir.
I move to postpone this until the first meeting in January, okay? And the reason being, of course, we've had a change of mayor. We've got a new one, right? That person ought to have some input into this thing. And I think have a little time, have a little time. So I honestly think we ought to postpone this.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and update us on the status of this?
And Mr. Mayor, I do have Ms. Henry on the phone who can give an update on the Board Salaries and Amoluments Commission that met. The last direction that the assembly gave was to have the Salaries and Amoluments Committee meet and make recommendations to the assembly. And that is a current motion that's attached to the legislation.
Okay, everybody has taken a look at that resolution from the committee? Okay.
What's it say? I don't know, what's it say? I don't have.
Tell you.
Okay.
It gives recommendations for the assembly, for Planning Commission, School Board. But what it gave a recommendation to the, regarding the mayor's salary is to have it at $65,000 with current amoluments.
So that's their recommendation?
But you've got a whole flock of other folks in there.
And what is the status of, is there current legislation?
There is current legislation moving forward from Assemblymember Sumner to change the Planning Commission and Plating Board from $50 to $100 because it has not changed since 1991. There's no other legislation that I have been directed to create to move forward on the Salaries and Amoluments Commission's recommendations.
And where was the mayor's salary set in the last budget?
I'm looking at Cheyenne because I do believe it was just under $30,000.
Well, it's $29,300.
We have a.
Through the mayor to the assembly. The amount budgeted was $50,000. However.
You got to change code.
You have to change code. So the current salary at $29,000 is what we are paying the mayor.
So that's the issue. If you want to change the salary of the mayor, you got to change the code provision under the mayor's general provisions. And so you want to move to continue this whole?
Yes, and I have a date specific here. I would move to postpone it until December 21st, regular assembly meeting.
Okay. Now, don't you think we should take up a temporary salary raise for me? Like $250,000 for the next three, just the next three, four days? Or how about, let's call it a bonus, just a straight shot cash. Mr. McKee, come on.
A golden parachute.
Golden parachute. I like things like that. Okay, we'll take that grant up as soon as we do this. Move this to, what was the date?
12/21.
12/21, any objection to that? Then we'll take up my grant. Assemblymember Sumner.
If we do that, can we take up all the proposals of the Salary and Amoluments Board? Or only specifically the mayor's salary?
Madam Clerk, I think they're all on board, all of you.
I would just need direction to write legislation. However, that one piece that you're requesting for planning and plating is under introductions. We either can take that off, you didn't have to do that introduction, or it can be done separately.
I guess I'm wondering if my legislation should be postponed to be considered at the same time? If you guys want to consider all of?
I think that'd be a good idea. I mean, the commission, they had raises for like the Planning Commission, the Plating Board Commission, they had raises for the assembly, they had raises for, right across the board. So you have to take a careful look at all those and write the legislation. Ms. Nowers?
Just kind of a question on that. The actual title is compensation for the mayor. So can we add the planning and plating? Or are you saying, because that would seem to go beyond the title. But are you saying that should come back as separate legislation? Or you're saying it could go under?
I'll let Madam Clerk take care of this.
To Assemblymember Nowers, I was answering Assemblymember Sumner's question in reference to all of them coming back together. We could do it that way later on in a different piece of legislation.
Any objection to Mr. McKee's motion to continue? We'll put it, Madam Clerk, cast some objection.
No, I don't have objection, I'm sorry. If the assembly wants it all to come back at one piece, we need to fail this piece.
Ooh.
Let's deal just with the mayor here. On the others, that seems like a big bite, okay? I think that the assembly might want to look at that real closely and the amoluments committee, how they derive their decision for these increases. And I'm sure there were no decreases among them.
I doubt it.
Yeah, so I think we ought to postpone just the mayor's until December 21st.
Okay, any objection? Just the mayor's?
Just the mayor.
So date certain. Any objection? December 21, 21040 is being continued, based on no objection. Now let's take up the direct grant to the current mayor. Mr. McKee, this will be your motion. Don't get it wrong now. My favorite son. Okay, there's no vetoes, introductions, Madam Clerk.
Introduction for public hearing on December 7th is Ordinance 21109 with accompanying resolution 21118. Ordinance 21110, ordinance 21111 with accompanying resolution 21119. Ordinance 21112, ordinance 21113 with accompanying resolution 21122. And ordinance 21114.
Okay, Ms. Bovee?
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk and set the public hearings for December 7, 2021.
December 7, 2021. Any discussion, any objection? Here now that legislation is introduced, vacancy report, Ms. Bovee.
I move to confirm the mayor's recommendations as follows. Enhanced 911 Advisory Board resignation of Brent Johnson. Metsu Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission resignation of Tam Bovee, Jesse Sumner, Jim Sykes. With terms beginning January 1, 2022. Agriculture Advisory Board Cody Buse, Joseph Slawick. Aviation Advisory Board Adrian Abrams. Board of Adjustment and Appeals Tina Crawford. Board of Equalization James Young. Commission on Salaries and Amoluments Jessica Viera. Health and Social Services Board Mary Hoyle. Historical Preservation Commission Kevin Toothaker. Library Board Susan Power. Local Emergency Planning Committee Kevin Munson, Kenneth Hudson, Kathy Kramer, Mike Molesky. Metsu Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission Mike Wood, Larry Engel, Howard D. Lo. Parks, Recreation and Trails Advisory Board Patricia Owens, Roy Wall, Ruth Wood. Plating Board Pio Catini. Caswell FSA Number 135 Cheryl Newsom. Central Metsu FSA Number 130 James Steele. Greater Palmer Consolidated FSA Number 132 Ted Stuff. Tulkina FSA Number 24 Louis Farina. West Lakes FSA Number 136 Kathy Kramer. Willow FSA Number 35 Michael Johnrow. Bogart RSA Number 25 Jennifer Novke. Caswell Lakes RSA Number 15 Randall Kowalki. Gold Trail RSA Number 28 Micah Schoming. Greater Butte RSA Number 26 Lucy Clubzadel. Greater Tulkina RSA Number 29 Robert Gurlock. Greater Willow RSA Number 20 Todd Smolden. Meadow Lakes RSA Number 27 Camden Yaley. North Colony RSA Number 23 Barbara Gerard.
Okay, any objection to the vacancy report? Seeing no objection, the vacancy report has passed. And I believe on the Fish Commission, it was Sykes and Sumner going on, you coming off. Okay, so just for the record. Yes, Mr. Hale.
I'm not sure, did you not get my request to be reappointed to the Fish and Wildlife Commission? Or?
I thought you were still on.
Oh, I don't know. I was told I needed to reapply and I called the clerk's office. So I was just curious.
It's news to me.
Okay.
You might not be on, I hope. You better, we'll have to have Deborah Weatherhorn. Yeah, have Deborah Weatherhorn check it out. Alls I know is that Ms. Bovee was coming off. And Mr. Sumner was applying and Mr. Sykes was applying. That's all I know. So we'll try to get it corrected. Okay, where are we at, Madam Clerk? Okay, comments. Let's do comments before we go into executive session. So let's start down with Mr. Sumner. Staff, any comments, Mr. Manager?
Just real quickly, just for the record, the port report is publicly available. It is out there and has been for a week or two. So the public can access that, just for the record. And on the record, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Bovee, you'll be missed. Best wishes.
Mr. Spropolis?
I'll start with George here. Assemblymember McKee, it's been a great six years you coming by and harassing me and having engaging conversations and not always easy to talk about things, but we got through it. So I appreciate your wit and your wisdom.
Thank you.
Assemblymember Bovee, you're much easier to talk to.
I'm kidding.
I think everybody's pretty much said it tonight. You're one of the hardest working assembly members ever to sit at the dais. You're all over the place, extremely responsive and did really good things for your community and, you know, brought those concerns to us. And so I appreciated that, appreciated working with you the past few years here and wish you all the best. So Mayor Halter, I've been waiting a long time to tell this story. Uh-oh. 2009, at the old dais, I'm standing in the vestibule on the back stairwell talking to Tom Cluberton, Assembly District 7 at the time. Tom says, I'm not running, can't run. I've got too much going on in my life. So, oh, you got somebody to run? He goes, yeah, Vern Halter. And I went, no. You mean that crazy guy from the Planning Commission that yells and screams at us all the time? And he goes, no, he's not that bad, don't worry about it. I don't know what changed, but when you move from the Planning Commission to the assembly, I don't know if you remember, sometimes at the Planning Commission, he'd give us the hardest time in the world over the smallest things.
Not much of a planner, so I don't know what they put him in the planning commission for.
But it's been a great, great decade plus. So you went in on the Planning Commission and then District 7 and mayor and wish you all the best.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that, Mr. McKee, I missed you earlier. I was trying to move quickly. I'm sure Mr. Hayes and I will get plenty of opportunities to continue our dialogue. Come on by, we got a spot for you.
Madam Clerk?
I don't do goodbyes well, so I'm going to make it very short. Mr. McKee, I'll miss your stories. I'm going to cry, sorry. Tam, I'm going to miss your kindness. And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to miss your levity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McKee, comments?
Thank you very much, folks, everybody up here, okay? Everybody's done what they think is right, okay? You just can't be right all the time like I'm snaking me, okay? But the assembly has done everything they can, okay? And that goes past assembly members too, okay? When you're here for six years, you see quite a turnover on the thing. And so it's been interesting, I would say this. I'm, I think that the borough has to find a way to get out to the community a little better than we are. I'm, I think that the borough has to find a way to get out to the community a little better than we are. Okay? The, the, all the testimony we had on that one little thing on the road, I think clearly demonstrates that. We got to do a little better that way. Anyway, it's been a pleasure, folks, thank you.
Ms. Nowers, comments?
Yeah, first I wanted to just thank the manager for, I totally agree with George, but I think the manager's been doing a lot to try to get information out and allow us as assembly members to get it out. And I really, really appreciate that. Things like this infrastructure package and the port report, et cetera. So I agree with George, like, how do we do it better? But I really appreciate that. Few comments on our departing members. I didn't think we'd ever get out of here with the Vern and Tam fan club going. Wasn't sure it would ever end. But that's a testament to, to all you Vern. I really appreciate the way that you cut to the heart of things on issues. And you're able to, even with all the diversity of opinion out here, find a way to lighten the mood. I've really appreciated your steady hand at the assembly meetings when things have gotten tense. You more than anybody have just, you know, made it so everybody can have their say. And that hasn't always happened. And then I just love how you say something wrong and then you get corrected and you say, just like I said. And I just, I'd like to steal that. Mr. McKee, thank you. You are a hard act to follow, I never like speaking after you. If I was in a comedy club, I would just walk away. But I will miss your wit and you, even though we don't always disagree, you ask really good questions and bring up financial issues that I really appreciate. And I think one time it was said that the world had frozen over because we both voted the same way. And I was surprised because I never felt like that. I think we agree on, on things more than maybe people think. And then Tam, it's hard to think of things to say that haven't already been said. That you have worked so hard and there's things you do behind the scenes that, you know, to try to work through sticky issues on behalf of your community and put hours and hours into that. And that will, I'll miss that, I'll, I'll miss your kindness as well. And I've definitely missed the tomato plant exchanges that have gone on and I have to find some way to do that. So, thanks to you all.
Mr. Sumner?
So, Mayor Halter, Deputy Mayor Bovee, Assemblymember McKee. It's been an extraordinary honor to serve on the assembly with you. When you guys leave, that, that'll be the, nobody else will be left that was, was here when I got here. You know, I, I came on with Tam and George and, and, and the mayor were already, already here. And so, this is, you know, kind of, this is sad in a way. And, but I know you guys will all go on and keep doing great things. And, and I really, really appreciate having served with you. Thank you.
Mr. Yon?
Sorry. I, I was really drinking from a fire hose this time last year for, for quite a few months. I know the staff had to probably deal with a lot of questions from me and different things. And, and I want to say to Ms. Bovee, when, your work ethic, I'd heard about it. And after being appointed to the port commission and then showing up and seeing you there, I was like, wow, this is pretty neat. You know, you, you're at all the meetings, you really did work as hard as people talked about. And then you would always come to me if anything was going to affect my district and talk to me beforehand. And, and I want you to know, I, that did not go unnoticed by me and I, I really do appreciate that. George, get me an XL t-shirt. I'm going to wear that to wrestling practice at Colony High all the time because coaches and teachers know who you are there. I've really enjoyed becoming close friends with your son, Ryan. He's a great kid, that's a testament to the job you and Dee have done. And I am looking forward to working with your better half. But I do hope that, you know, you stay involved and I know you will. The mayor, my only regret with my time with you is that I didn't get elected sooner. Your leadership, leadership comes from the top down. And this is something I talk to kids in our community about a lot, is how, how do you handle people that don't agree with you 100% of the time? We all run into that position and this is a beautiful body up here. There's going to be times that we're not all going to agree. And your leadership is second to none. The way you handle everybody and keep everybody together and at a time when politics can be so divisive, I just want you to know that I really admire your leadership skills and, and I hope someday I can help duplicate them. So, take care.
Mr. Two, did you comment yet?
I would say thank you Vern and Tam and George. I'm really going to miss George. And I've learned a lot through this year. And I, I hope to grow a lot more in the next two years. So I'm going to miss you guys, thank you, and that's all I got.
Mr. Hale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege working with all three of you. George and Tam and the mayor. It's, it really has been an excellent experience. And as for you, Mr. Mayor, and all the joking aside and, and the levity, I want to say that you run an excellent meeting. You keep us on track, you keep us focused on what, what the issue is at hand. And, and it's going to be a hard act to follow. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bovee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had to write a speech because I don't do goodbyes either. So, there's a lot I'd like to say, probably a lot more I shouldn't say. So I'll try to keep this brief. But I would like to explain why I got involved in local government. And I know some of you know this story, but not everyone does. So about seven years ago, I had just been diagnosed with stage four cancer and was getting treatment. And my husband was also very unexpectedly diagnosed with stage four cancer. And all those life plans and goals we'd made flew out the window and nothing made sense anymore. And all those abstract thoughts of what kind of world we're going to leave our children suddenly took on a new urgency. Shortly after that, the Willow community threw a fundraiser to help us with treatment costs. And we were overwhelmed with support from people we didn't even know. And I started to realize that this was a world we were leaving for the girls. Nothing big and life-changing, just our local community. The people who would be there for them when we weren't. And that on some small local level, we could make a difference. So we got involved with the Willow Fire Department drama. And not only were we able to make some much-needed changes to our local fire service, it was a wonderful distraction. And for a moment, it wasn't about me or gourd or cancer or dying. And my kids could go to the post office without a friend hugging them and crying. And instead, people wanted to talk about what was happening with the fire department and how they could help. And we made new friends and more people started to get involved. And a couple of months later, when the Sauk Eye wildfire devastated our community, there was more volunteer work to do. And we did. And after my husband died, we stayed involved, helping out where we could. And we started to meet more people from other communities and partnering with them on local issues and working with borough staff and representatives. And so when the assembly seat opened up, it seemed like a good opportunity to continue to help my friends and neighbors. Anyone who thinks for a minute that this was about me or some liberal political agenda hasn't met me or paid attention to the legislation I sponsored or supported, that's not how I think, certainly not how I act. It was never political. It was always about the communities I represented. Because I really care about the world I'm going to leave my daughters and granddaughters. I gave 100% to this job. I borrowed money to hold this job. And so it absolutely sucks to be a good person and an honest person and to work hard and to lose my job because of lies. But that's the face of politics right now. And so here we are. And I'd like to ask our newly-elected Assembly Representative Ron Bernier to follow in the footsteps of the District 7 representatives who served before us and to be honest and available and nonpartisan and not forget that half of your constituents live outside of the core area. I want to thank those communities I represented, especially those serving on community councils and advisory boards. Your time and expertise is vital to the public process. And I want to thank Mayor Halter on behalf of myself and all of District 7. I'm not sure if I can explain how much Mayor Halter means to those of us up north. He's definitely a local celebrity. I can remember the exact moment he first talked to me. And I didn't even think he knew my name and how in awe of him I was. But I thought that was just a Willow thing. And then I started working with folks outside of our little community and I realized that everyone in the north seemed to feel the same way. That he was an all-around great guy and an excellent assembly representative. And each community seemed to think he belonged especially to them because that's the way he made them feel. Mayor Halter, it's been an honor to follow in your footsteps and to serve as your deputy. I have a world of respect for you and how you represented not only District 7, but also the entire borough. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Bovee. You know, to everybody, you know, I, I do feel good. I, I really feel whole in my life and I feel lucky. And, you know, to have done what I've done, you know, to be on the planning, and I do agree, Mr. Spropoulos, I was a jerk on the planning commission, wasn't I? Because, you know, I didn't understand planning, you know? I understand starting a bulldozer and doing, but, so, you have my apologies for that. But, but, you know, being an assembly member, you know, first was, was good for me because you really learn the grassroots. You learn about your communities, you learn about the things they need. And so, Mr. Bernier, I think if you start listening to those folks, you will, you will get way ahead, you know? And it's not about the big things, it's not about the big political world in the United States, it's really just simple things, you know? So, I, I wish you well, by the way. And to everybody here at the borough, you know, we're in such a great state right now. I think the Metsu has just brought ourselves to this level where we are going to grow faster than any other place and we are still going to be the best place to live. And that's kind of the key to it. And I think that's why I love this assembly. An assembly shouldn't be just everybody thinking the same. You know, I think you're, that's the wrong direction to go. So having diversity of people on the assembly, whether you're Republican or Democrat or whoever you are, doesn't really matter to me. It's, it's what you bring to the table and what you stand for and what you vote for. And I always respected every vote. And I, but really, you know, I have trust in the managerial form of government. And, and Edna, I hope you stick with that. You know, we've got great management here right now, Mr. Brown and George Hayes sitting back here, all, just the wealth of experience. And of course, you know John Mucey coming over from here, how, how good he was with the borough and you understand that. And I hope that, that keeps going, you know, that, I, I think that's the best thing for the borough in this time period. And in the borough staff, all you directors and everybody that run this place on a daily basis, you have my total respect. Because that's what it's all about, you know? I don't spend much time in the office and I hope Edna's a little closer to it, maybe she'll move in where I, I never did get moved into that office, so, but. They moved me out about two years ago. So you could, you could move in anytime you want. But I just, I, I totally believe in the borough, I totally believe where we are right now. I think we have to deal, build relations with, with the state, with our legislative delegation. We got to strengthen them with, in the state. And I think, you know, this infrastructure money coming down from the federal government, it's a big deal. So we need to get our share, which has got to go through all these bureaucracies out in the federal government. Then it's going to go to DOT, which is another whole world. So we have to build those relationships to make sure that the borough that's going at the rate it is should stay that way. Because I was really proud of, now the election, you know, the, the numbers are really clear. But you know, the road bond, wasn't it two to one, the vote on the road bond? Sure, and I realized the people that came in tonight from this community were dead set against that little, that road. And I understand that from their stance. But these other roads that are in that road bond, this is a significant thing to get these funded and get infrastructure money and, and get that done. So I think we're right on edge. And Mr. Brown, you know, you have my total respect. And I, I know that when you came in here, there was a little bit of, you know, I, I kind of asked you to apply for it and there was a vote, a couple of people voted against you, but I'll bet you right now that that's not so. And so I think we're off to a good start and, and I just feel good. You know, it is, it is, I'm walking out of the borough with a, a very happy man. And, and I'm very happy with this assembly. I, you know, Mr. Two, you and I have our moments every once in a while, but don't think I do not, do not respect you, you know? Did I veto you twice?
Twice.
God. I, I thought it was, I thought it was at least, I thought it was at least three or four times, I was just going to slip it, you know? No, I didn't really veto you, I vetoed what, what you were trying to push forward on those, was it the truck rate or something? See, now we can have a little, little humor there. So, all you assembly members, good luck. Madam Clerk, I may cry a little bit when I don't get to see you every two weeks or whatever our meetings are. Mr. Spropoulos, I have thoroughly enjoyed you, you have my total respect. The borough's under good hands legally and you've got a great department. And so I will miss seeing you and all the things. I guess we're going to have an executive session now on redistricting. So we'll invite Edna and Mr. Bernier and whoever else, is Dee still here? And so, we got to extend the meeting. So could somebody move the meeting, what do you want, what time? Okay. We need a motion, Ms. Bovee, to extend the meeting to 10:30.
I move to extend the meeting until 10:30.
Okay, any objection? If not, let's move us into executive session, please.
I move to enter executive session for matters which the immediate public knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the borough and matters which by law municipal charter ordinance are required to be kept confidential and to discuss matters involving consideration of borough records that by law are not subject to public disclosure and discussion of matters subject to attorney-client privilege. In particular, to discuss potential litigation regarding the 2021 state redistricting plan. Those in executive session will be the mayor, the assembly, the manager, the attorney, the clerk, the assistant manager, and the newly-elected Edna DeVries and Ron Bernier.
Okay, any objection, any discussion? Mr. Sumner? He said, Mr. Sumner suggested Mr. Stoltz, but I don't, I don't have a problem with it, you know? Any objection to Mr. Stoltz sitting in? Okay. So we'll add Mr. Stoltz to the list, okay? Okay. So we'll, here are no objections, we'll enter executive session at 9:30 PM. Yeah, we're going to be downstairs.